Good evening, I'm going to call to order the Burnsville Planning Commission for Monday, March 25th, 2019. We've got a full house here at City Hall, thank you for everybody for coming out tonight. Our first item on the agenda is approval of the agenda. Are there any changes or additions from staff?
No changes.
Commissioners?
Nope.
I would entertain a motion.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, item two, approval of the minutes of the March 11th, 2019 Planning Commission meeting. Any changes to those from staff or from commissioners?
None from staff.
None from staff?
Nope.
Looked good to me as well. Alright, I would entertain a motion.
Go ahead.
So moved.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
I can second everything beyond 6:50 PM.
There it is. We have a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Alright, that gets us to the meat of the agenda. Item three, is a continued public hearing for application of Junction 35W and 13 LLC for Planned Unit Development Amendment for 75-foot tall addition to the south side of the existing building for warehouse office, storage and event center located at 12600 West Frontage Road. Ms. Garros.
Thank you, members of the Planning Commission, and we do have the applicant here this evening, and they will be able to address questions that you may have. As this is the second time we've gone over this, I'll spend the majority of time just looking at the highlights of the changes from what you saw at your last packet. The, the application has been continued. If you recall, they wanted to have a little bit taller building than we initially published, so we had to republish and send that out. So we're looking at a PUD amendment to allow a 75-foot tall building as opposed to 35, and this is allowed with a conditional use permit or PUD. And then also, for one of the uses that's proposed is an event center, which is not a use generally in that zoning district, so that needs Planned Unit Development approval as well. They are proposing a three-story addition. I have to apologize a little bit in the staff report, I think I went back and forth, but we've got two floors that have mezzanines, so even though, you know, there are another level above, it's actually still the three floors. And the subject site is at 12600 West Frontage Road. It abouts the Frontage Road, and basically, we have Southern Lights, which is just to the west, and they're proposing to do a joint parking agreement, and that information was provided in your packet to allow for off-site additional parking. The benefits of the PUD with the event center, it adds a new business attraction to Burnsville. It allows existing businesses to expand, and actually with this particular application, there are two additional tenant spaces from what you saw last time, so additional places for, for other businesses as well. And we have overall green space and their proposed green space in the parking lot both exceed the ordinance requirements, so those are considered to be benefits for the project. In terms of deviations, it'll look at this a little bit closer when we get to the site plan, but there've been, there's a deck that's proposed on the west side of the building, and then another deck that overhangs the west side, and the west side of the building is right on the setback line, so those decks would encroach within that setback, so they're looking for deviations to allow those two decks. Also, there is a parking island on the very south part of the property where it's, they had initially shown that being installed as a landscape island, but that's modified in the plans, and now they're just showing striping, excuse me. So that would require deviation because you do need to have medians at the end of each parking room. As indicated, the height, 75 feet is proposed. The event center use, they are increasing the building footprint to 31%. 30%, we could process that as staff administratively, but it's 31%. And again, that's something that's allowed by the ordinance. Outdoor seating for over 50 seats, so that does require also a conditional use permit or Planned Unit Development, especially because this site is a budding residential. There's a multifamily residential to the southwest. And they're looking to have, as I indicated, deviations from parking to allow lesser parking stalls than required for the event center use, because that's kind of a secondary use or use that happens evenings and weekends, opposite of when business hours are. So that is what the deviation is requesting. And then to allow the parking agreement as opposed to the recorded deed restriction, that is still within the application. The use of tandem parking stalls for the event center, we talked about that last time, and that would be for just evening and weekend parking for events. And then a reduction in the building perimeter landscaping, which staff is supportive, and we discussed this last time as well. In terms of the development summary, not much has changed from the last application. The only thing primarily is with the number of parking stalls is actually reduced overall, because they have reduced the size of the, both the patio and the event center use. So that basically comes up with a change in parking. And the existing site, as it exists out there, we have to the southwest, approximately this area here, where the multifamily apartments are, and we've got general business zoning and an office building just to the south. And the site plan, this is an overall view, but really for a little bit closer up. What they're doing is, we have the existing building and then the addition to the south. And what's happening is, basically, there's not much change in terms of impervious surface, because they're covering existing parking area with building. They are proposing a retaining wall in this location, back through here, and we have a condition identified that we'd like to see a fence to be installed for safety purposes on top of the retaining wall. In addition to that, they are proposing, this would be an area that cars can drive through to drop off for valet parking for the event center, so that has not changed. The one item that I talked about with the parking island is in this location here, where this was shown as a landscape parking island, and now on the site plan, it's just shown as being striped. So the areas that there are, that staff has issues with in terms of, we're not supportive of, we're not supportive of this change to this parking island. It is a standard ordinance requirement that at the end of long rows, you do have parking median installed, and painting is just not something that's allowed. That's a very minimum requirement of the ordinance, so staff is suggesting that that be reestablished as a median, raised median or planter island to meet the ordinance. And then the two setback deviations are in these locations. There's a larger deck that's proposed on the southwest part of the building, and then this deck actually is along the north front, but there is a part of it that overhangs into that building setback. And in terms of the, the floor plans have changed. On the, this is the existing building, there's existing warehouse here. They are using a part of the existing building for the grooms area on that main floor, so that's a change from the last meeting. And then this would be the main level floor plan of the addition. This is really all warehouse space with the exception of the valet parking and general entry area here on the southeast. Then, the first floor mezzanine is in this location here, and this was in the plans before, but it was listed as a future mezzanine, so they are proposing to actually include that in the construction, so that has added some additional square footage as well. Then on the second level, we still have the two larger tenant spaces that are offered in this location, and this shows the one deck, the larger deck, if you will, coming off of this tenant space, the west tenant space, and then here is the smaller deck. And something that's changed from the last plan is, the last plan showed basically having a patio pretty much across the entire front of the addition, and that has gone away. Now they're looking at some decks in front of some of the tenant suites, but not that long patio. On the third floor, we still have the, the outdoor patio that's here. We have the, there's a bar area that's set up to serve both patio and also the dining area, and the dining area is in through here. They've added storage space for the event center, and then this would be one of the tenant spaces. This previously, when we looked at it, was indicated as a living unit. They've removed that now, so this is just another commercial tenant space. And this would be for the third level mezzanine. Here, you have the mezzanine on the south part of the building, and it will look out over the dining area through here, and there is another tenant space on the mezzanine level. So that will also look over. And in terms of the exterior materials, the applicant had indicated last time, that's the reason they requested the continuance, is to allow for changes in the exterior materials from the plans that you had seen before. So what they're showing are basically panels, concrete panels with different types of, two different textures, if you will, and then also different colorations. And then they do still have the metal panels that they're proposing on the very top, and this would be the easterly side and the northerly side. The metal panels, just like they had last time, also shown in this location. And this just gives you a view of the existing building, the existing retaining wall to the north, and then what the proposed additional will look like. They still have the drive-under canopy, and they still have the landscape island right in front of that. This is a little bit closer view. We included in the staff report the specifics on the exterior materials, and this would be the south and southeast perspectives, and the applicant indicated last time that they did not want to continue that metal all the way through. So they're showing basically just the panels in this location. And then on the west side of the building, you have the same panels in through here. These would be the areas where there are the encroachments for the decks. This is the one that extends over the property line, but the majority of it is along that north wall, and this one extends well into that required 30-foot setback. Primary issues with these are that, from the fire department's perspective, they are concerned about the ability to be able to service, get their ladder trucks, et cetera, through here, so they have indicated that they do not support these. From a staff perspective, they can, this is still all one unit, one, one tenant space, so they can have, you know, additional decking along the north face, which would not have to encroach at all into the setback, so that is why staff is not supportive of those deviations. This shows what the north side of the building will be. This is the roof of the existing building, and then you have the change in the materials, and again, the top levels having the metal exterior. And then this is looking from approximately down north of the building off the Frontage Road, where you have the existing caliber and then the addition to the back. And the applicant also did provide additional sections showing that their, the parapet walls and the site angles will not, you'll not be able to see the rooftop equipment from the Frontage Road. And with that, staff is recommending approval of the application, but subject to a number of conditions. For the most part, these are very minor conditions and ones that you've seen before. We have modified the conditions as requested by the applicant. They wanted to make sure that, for example, for liquor, if liquor is served, that it's not the owner of the building that's responsible for getting it. It would be the caterers, et cetera, so we just modified the standard to say that if liquor is served, they're subject to the state and local ordinance requirements. In terms of hours of operation, we included the standard hours that are in the ordinance already. That would be for, oh, another one I wanted to touch on too was the security requirements. That was a point of discussion, so what we did with that is that security be provided at events when liquor is served, and hopefully that addresses the, the major questions or issues there. For exterior sound equipment, that needs to be shut off at 10:00 PM, and that's a city code requirement. This is the compliance with city and state liquor license requirements. Then hours of operation, depending on if there's liquor or not, those are different, so we decided, again, that the ordinance applies. And the one item that, if the Planning Commission wants to approve the application as requested by the applicant, you would need to then modify the conditions to delete number 10, for this is the deed restriction. And staff is recommending that, because that is what the ordinance requirement is. But we have had another application where leased parking was approved by the city council, and that was a conditional use permit, but this is a Planned Unit Development, so the opportunity is there to do so, should you see fit. We talked about the fence, landscape islands, comprehensive sign plan, we're requesting that, because there are going to be multiple tenant spaces in there, so then that's where the comprehensive sign plan comes into place for the owner of the building to identify where and what type of signage they want to allow on their building. Revised photometric plan, we talked about that last time. They just need to extend the information out to the property lines. And then we did indicate, or include in your packet, the city engineer review memos, and there are some technical items that they wanted to have addressed, so all of those requirements would need to be addressed. Also, in the future, at this time, they are not proposing to have heavy use of, of a commercial kitchen. We talked about that. They know what they would need to do in the future to do that. If they do decide to do that, there is a condition here recommended about grease traps and interceptors. In addition to that, the project, this was applied the last time too, is, does need to be reviewed and approved by a state licensed architect for the fire protection elements. Also, the fire department has indicated that they do need to have hydrant on site, so they have requested that be added. The water lines need to be sized accordingly to meet fire department requirements, and then plans need to be revised to provide the fire access, and that would be the extent of the conditions. So with that, it is a public hearing, it is continued, and does need to be open for public comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Garros. Let me ask just a couple clarifying questions first. So there, if I'm, if I'm understanding this correctly, there are four of the requested deviations that staff is not supportive of, correct?
Correct.
The, the, the deck setbacks are two of those.
Yes.
And is it fair to say both of those are fire?
Yes.
Fire reasons? Okay.
Yes.
The fire department rationale, and the parking island is the third, and then the parking deed versus parking, did I, did I understand that all correctly?
Yeah, so I'm sorry, I forgot to identify. We indicated the ones that we're not supportive of in, in the north.
Oh, that's the coloration, okay.
And white for the other ones.
I should have connected the dots on that one.
Sorry about that. My fault.
Okay, are there any questions that commissioners have for Ms. Garros at this stage?
I just have a quick comment.
Commissioner Timmerman.
Looking at the, the changes and the recommendations that staff has worked with the applicant on, I, I think that these address some of the concerns that we talked about several weeks ago, so I do appreciate that. And I will save other questions for the applicant.
Just a couple quick questions. For the deck, the two decks, could they be made smaller
to accommodate fire, or would they just have to be completely eliminated?
Fire department's recommending they not be included at all.
Okay.
They're right at the, at the line.
Okay.
So, yeah, they, they're having, that's something that they felt very important.
Yeah, and then the hours of operation, I know you said that it varies with liquor versus not.
Yes.
Would it just be hours of operation when everything needs to be shut down? Do you know off the top of your head for that ordinance?
Based on the, sorry, I have to go through these here. There are a couple of different things, because there are different aspects of the city code that apply here, other than the zoning ordinance that we typically deal with, and those are the liquor ordinance. So depending on, depending on if there's liquor, a couple of them apply, and if not, the other ones do. The 10:00 PM is a general noise.
Okay.
Standard when you have outdoor seating, so we just included what, what the ordinance was. And the item number nine, that is related to the liquor license.
Okay. And then lastly, regarding the parking island, can it just be an, a smaller curb-like island, or, I mean, is it set in stone somewhere that it needs to be a specific type of island?
It just needs to be a raised.
Okay.
Island, just a standard height. It doesn't need to be a planter island, but it does need to be at least nine feet wide.
Okay, good. Thank you.
I think, Deb, I think we'll have the applicant or applicant representative come up. They would like, I have a couple of questions here, so. Welcome, if you could identify yourself for the record.
I'm Ernest Delain.
Welcome back.
Mike Hafler from Haf Group.
Great, thank you. My first question, you've obviously seen the staff recommendations here, and there are, there are a number of items that the staff is not supportive of. What is your, in particular, the parking island, the, the deck and the, the fire safety issue there are the, are the ones that interest me the, the most. What, what is your response to that, or how does that impact the project in your?
We met, we met with the, with Doug after we got the memo, and his main concern on the west end, the decks on the west end, was that he didn't want, when he raised his boom up, he didn't want to have anything interfering. So we asked him if he could have something at the north end of the west wall, and he was okay with that, because that's way off to the, he would, if he came in, he wouldn't be way to the north end of that wall. So the one deck that's kind of in the middle, he wanted that removed, but the other one, he said was okay. So he said we could come back a little ways on the, on the, towards the south, on the northwest corner, with the deck. He said that wouldn't interfere.
That I'm not aware of. I have, you know, my last word from the fire department is, they do not support either.
Okay, but the way you have this word, the way this would be worded would be, would just be the westward encroachment that is a, an issue.
Yep, and subject to, I think if it were subject to approval of the fire department, we could leave it at that, and then if they're willing to, you know, if they can allow some additional deviation, you could do it that way as well.
And then the, the parking island issue?
Mainly for snow.
For?
For snow, for snow plowing, and we wanted to have more room to swing the car around underneath the portica share if they had a limousine.
Okay. Commissioners, any additional questions for the applicants that takes care of mine? Questions?
Yes.
Commissioner Henderson.
So what would be the earliest an event could start?
They can arrive, the guests can arrive at 10:00 AM.
Okay.
But the event probably, oh, 10:00 AM.
Okay.
Like on a Saturday.
Yeah.
Yeah, for weddings, yeah.
Okay, so, because I, did you say that events would happen both Friday and Saturday? Or did I read that incorrectly?
Yeah, Friday evenings and Saturdays, yes.
So on Fridays, then, when, when would they start?
Usually evening weddings start at about 6:00, so.
Okay, okay, because I was just wondering, because when Southern Light has their tent sale, because I know you guys want to share parking lots.
Yeah.
And they're, they're open Fridays from 9:00 to 5:00 and Saturdays from 9:00 to 4:00. So if an event is happening at Saturday, starting at 10 o'clock, and you guys are sharing parking lots, how is that going to work, and the tent sale is going on?
How'd that work? Mike, how busy is the parking lot on Saturdays when you have tent sales?
Hi, Mike Waylon with EFH, and we manage and own the Southern Lights building. So technically, or typically, when there is the tent sale and that parking lot, we expanded the parking lot about six, seven years ago, so there shouldn't be any issues on the weekends with the tent sale going on. And I know Craig and Ernie, they trade parking with employees on some of those locations, but we've never had any complaints or any issues with the needing additional parking and that on those days.
So, so in your opinion, would there be sufficient parking if there was a tent sale going on and an event?
Definitely.
Okay.
Yeah.
Additional questions? No, no? Commissioner Timmerman?
Thank you.
So, can you kind of talk a little bit about the difference?
So can you kind of talk a little bit about the differences between what we're seeing today versus what we saw four weeks ago, especially as it relates to the tenant spaces? Because it looks like the two decks that are in question are attached to tenant spaces. And I'm curious what the, I guess what you're envisioning those spaces to, one, be used for. But, but also, I'm, I, I just want a little bit of understanding of what's different this time than four weeks ago.
Four weeks ago, the thing, the main thing that threw it out was the, we had this metal siding. We were going to do different construction. When we first looked at the building, then we figured out we could do all panels. And it was just better, faster construction. So then the, the siding of the north, on the south side and the west side was different. And I think that was the main thing. That and the height of the building. It was 71, which was going to 75. So those are the two main things that I think you guys had stumbling blocks on the last time were the changes that we had addressed. So the, the decks on the west side, I'm going to actually occupy the west end of the, of the second floor, if you will. And my people just like to go outside, throw in the phones. You know, if you're on the north side, it's going to be all shaded because the building kind of faces northeast. So you'll never get any sun over there. So I was hoping to have a place for my employees to go out, take a break, talk on the phone. So it doesn't need to be a big deck. So, I mean, hopefully, some kind of a deck, maybe I can work with Doug closer. If you guys could put it a, you know, an exception in there, if we get him to redo it, that we could put the decks on the west side just to, you know, throw on the north side of the west end, that's fine. But it was just mostly to make the place more, you know, friendly, to have a better work environment. You know, it's nothing more frustrating than looking at a beautiful day and you can't go out there. You know, it's all solid windows.
Like today.
I'm a solar powered guy and I like to be outside myself.
And it does also give more access in the case of emergency with fire, that you have a door to be able to get into. The other changes that we've made, we've increased more Class A materials on the building of more curtain wall glass on the north side. Quite a bit more glass.
And so what are you, what are you thinking you're going to bring into those other tenant spaces? And the reason I'm asking these questions is because of the safety concerns and the fire concerns of the manufacturing combined with now an event center. I, I, within the recommendations, there's obviously a lot of checks and balances to make sure that there's fire suppression and that the fire department is able to access the building. But I am curious what the vision is for those other spaces now that the, the overnight suite has been converted into tenant space as well.
I guess I don't really have a specific type of tenant mind, but just office, you know, office use. Probably office, maybe they want to use some of the warehouse. So just office use, I guess.
And we've met all of our area separations with, it's a three-hour building. So it's, it's well protected along with sprinklers.
Additional questions for the applicant? Okay. Thank you very much. I think we will then, the, the public hearing is still open. We're going to reopen the public hearing on this one. So if there's anyone who would like to speak on this application, I don't know if we have, we don't really know. Probably for the other ones. Please come forward if you're here to speak on this one. The public hearing is reopened at 6:59 PM. All right. Sir, if you can introduce yourself.
My name is Jeff Jurdie. I live at 46 East 125th Street. And some of the folks paying attention may know that my wife and I just sold a two-and-a-half acre commercial property in the northwest, a northeast quadrant of 13 and 35 W. So when I saw that there's a cross-parking agreement, which did not require deed restrictions, I rejoiced because we wasted, or the new owner of the property, although we still have title, has, has really lost months in the progress. So way to go. I like to see the coordination of parking rather than just paving over suburban America. I am curious about one little detail, and that is we're required to, or the new owners required to see a, a walkway built to connect those two parking areas so that on-street parking doesn't happen, but people are drawn to the cross-parking area. And I wonder if that's been done here. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional comments? All right, we'll close the public hearing at 7:00 PM. Oh, yes, sir.
I noticed one thing today when I was looking at the agenda, number 21. It's, I'm not sure, Deb, what you're talking about there, but I've met with Doug. And before I even started this project, I met with Deb and talked about potential hurdles. And she said fire was the biggest hurdle. So I had Doug out. We walked the property. I showed exactly what I was doing. This is probably three years ago. And he indicated that, you know, a walkway along the building with the openings is what they would require. So I was fine with that. And so I kept going with the project. And then as we went on, I decided to leave a fire lane or leave a road back there to kind of get access to the back, which would benefit me as well. So they were happy about that. And then now I'm seeing, I'm not sure if you're suggesting that there's a turnaround with the redesign, the whole building. Can you clarify number 21?
This is directly from the memo that the fire marshal sent to you last week.
Okay. And I met with him Friday after, I think it was after you wrote this, I think, so.
Probably then, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
But like I say, I don't have, I, I don't have any updates.
He didn't, he didn't have a problem before with it. So I'm surprised that it came up now out of the blue.
This was taken directly from the memorandum that he did, that he sent to you last week.
But that came up just a couple of weeks ago, I mean, after our last hearing or after our last meeting, planning meeting. So, but anyway, I did chat with him on, for, last Friday, so. But I just, if that, if that has, if that happens, the project's dead and I'm not going to do it. Because it just would totally, I wouldn't have any room. My building is, sticks out 96 feet. And if they want a hundred foot turnaround, there wouldn't be any room back there, so.
Deb, this, this basically just says that it needs to be worked out with the fire marshal, correct?
Yes.
I mean, if this is kind of the general.
And then when his email or letter with, I don't know, 15, 18 conditions was sent to you. So if you don't have issues with that, then there shouldn't be issues with this.
Okay.
But we had to write this and get this out for review for the planning commissioners. So that needed to be done. And so that, this was done before then your meeting with the fire.
Okay.
Fire marshal.
So just so you know, if that happens, then the whole project's dead. And I just wasted about $150,000, so.
No, we appreciate that. The, obviously, this, we'll, we'll discuss here the, 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 the application as a whole. But in my opinion, I think the fire issues are very significant. They're not one that we typically give a lot of leeway on, just because that's a, a basic public safety issue. But my understanding of this is that it's, it's, you know, it's, it's basically one qualification for the approvals, that it's got to be, and it sounds like you're on your way with that. I, we, we don't actually have that, that information, but that's, typically, we don't go into that level of detail. We have these conditions.
Sounds good. I wasn't sure what level, if I should even bring it up. But I know that we're working with the licensed fire and they're working with architects. And so everything will be per code and per.
Right, right.
Yeah. So, all right. Thanks.
Thank you. All right. Commissioners, what is your pleasure? Do you want to, who wants to start? Commissioner Timmerman?
I think we're going to have to tweak some of the language on a few of these items. I, I agree with you, Chair, that the fire concerns are paramount here. I, I think that this is a unique situation, combining a manufacturing business with a business that brings in a lot of hundreds of customers for unrelated type of events. I'm concerned about the decks. I'm concerned about the ambiguity in what the fire department has told the applicant versus what the, the city is aware of at this point. And so I'd like to, to work on tweaking the language so the applicant can move forward, but also make sure we're considering some of these, these concerns. And so I, I guess, first of all, I, I'd like to talk about number four in the recommendations. And that is regarding modifying the decks shown on the west side of the building. The applicant says that he's had conversations with the fire department regarding the, the northernmost deck. And I, I trust that's true. And, and so I would recommend that we modify this language to say something along the lines of that the southernmost deck is removed and that with approval. Similarly worded to number 21, with approval of the fire department, that the, the northern deck could remain.
That makes sense. Yep.
That makes sense to you, Deb?
Yes. Got it.
No, I think that addresses that issue for me, too.
Okay. Do you need a motion for that, or?
Well, let's, um, let's talk about the other deviation issues. I don't know if you were going to talk there.
Yep. I, I did want to talk about a couple of the other items. Can we go back to the deviation screen, Deb? And, and while you're doing that, I'll just touch on the comments I had for number 21. And again, I think that this is, this language is general enough that you'll be able to work with the fire department on this. I don't think that there's, the way I read it, I don't see concerns there. So the two first items are addressing the deck and the deviations. As far as the parking island goes, I think, again, Deb, you outlined that well. That's, that's a pretty standard requirement. And I, I, I think that there may be other adjustments that could be made. If, if there's, if there's parking considerations that we're going to need to discuss, if you remove one, if not two, parking spaces in order to develop an island, you know, maybe there is a solution. But I think that this is such a common requirement that I, I don't see a deviation being, I, I don't support a deviation here. And as far as the parking agreement, I, I agree that a deed restriction in this particular case should be required. I think that we, we've looked at another proposal within the last few months. But I do think that there, there were some differences with that. And I think Commissioner Benkey stated his opinion on that at the last meeting as well, which was that the, the general uses is quite different. I'd be open to hearing other opinions on that, though.
Commissioner Henderson, you want to go first?
No, go ahead.
Next?
Yeah.
Um, I'll, I'll start with the, I'm, I'm of the opposite view on the deed restriction versus parking agreement. I, you know, I, I think we've done that. We did that once before. I know it was a different circumstance, but it makes sense to me. And I, I also think it puts the, the business in a bit of a challenge to put a permanent deed restriction on play. I, I, I feel that's just excessively cumbersome. The, I, I think I would agree with you on the parking lot island, however. Although I do, do think their point about turning radius issues and snow removal are, are good ones. I'm not sure this, and correct me if I'm wrong on this, Deb, does, does, are, are, would they still be able to modify, if, if we leave this in so that the parking island is, is, is still a requirement? Are they able to modify it to accommodate further?
Yes. The parking island that they're showing is, or that they had was much larger than what's required. So basically.
So there still is some wiggle room there?
Yeah. Because they're showing here, this was the old kind of parking island area, taking up, was that, you know, at least three spaces. A standard is the standard parking lot. Parking stall size is nine by 18. So basically, it would be, one of these parking stalls would be what's required by the ordinance for the minimum. So they could put it here and the stall could be left open. They don't necessarily have to design it as they've shown here.
Okay. And then on the, on the deck ones, too, I think, I, I agree with what you're suggesting there, Commissioner Timmerman, that just if fire safety is the concern there, I'm fine with ensuring that whatever's put there is in compliance with, you know, meets, meets the fire safety standards. So that makes sense, so. So Commissioner Henderson?
Yes. I agree with everything that you had said, Chair. The, I do agree with the deed restriction as well. I think it, it is cumbersome for something like that. But let me ask, Deb, do you know that with the agreements, if somebody sells, that agreement stops, is terminated?
We don't have any control over it.
Okay.
That's the whole issue.
Okay.
From a staff standpoint. And we have done deed restrictions. I mean, there are lots of them out there. So it's not something that's maybe overly cumbersome, you know, in this particular situation for this applicant. But that's been in the ordinance for a long, long time. And it's always been followed, to my knowledge, until the last application we had here a couple of months ago.
And we were warned that that would start a precedent, I believe.
Yes, yes, yep.
Thank you.
Well, with having that knowledge now, I'm, I'm on the fence with the deed.
And there's only three of us here tonight, too. So you might be the deciding vote. So any additional comments or questions, or would someone like to make a motion?
Can I make a comment regarding your deed restriction?
Uh, yes.
So since we have the property to the, the Southern Lights property, and based upon our uses, we will not agree to a deed restriction on our parcel for parking. We'll go with a written agreement. But the deed restriction is, continues on and on and on. And not knowing what other uses will come up, it's really places undue burden on that property for many years to come, so. But we're willing to be a good neighbor and work with Ernie on that and with a written agreement. But we wouldn't agree to any type of deed restriction, so.
That's helpful information. Thank you. The, I think that cuts both ways, obviously. It's, it's, so it, it, it's a facility that's being built as an event center. If it changes hands, there could be future parking issues created by that. But I, but your point, I think, is a, is a valid one as, as well. It seems like an awful permanent issue, so.
Can I ask Deb another question?
You can have to ask Deb another question.
Okay. If you know, Deb, I'm not sure.
A parking conundrum.
Both properties would have to have a deed restriction, correct? Because if they're going to share lots.
Correct. Because they're sharing, they're saying the shared parking goes along with the uses.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Additional questions, debate, discussion, or the chair would entertain a motion? It's going to be a complicated one, I think.
Yes, it is.
I don't know. I think we should talk about the deed restriction a little bit more because of the fact that this is going to move beyond this particular project. And I think I said the same thing last time, and I was supportive of the deed restriction then. I, I think that the, the challenge is that we, we at some point need to be consistent in how we are addressing these. And I don't know that allowing all, all projects to have just a written agreement going forward is, is really the right route. I, I can, for this particular project, be supportive of, of waiving that deed restriction because we have done that more recently. But I would like to see this, this particular ordinance on a, on an agenda for us to discuss. I know we don't have it on our work plan for this year, but I think it would be.
Actually, we do. This would be part of the parking, parking study. I'm not sure where that's at, but it is on your work plan for this year. There is also another mitigating factor here where the applicant has set up and is working with a shuttle service. That was not something that was part of the previous, that other application, so.
And, and I, I thank you for bringing that up because that was my next point. And, and with the last applicant, I was trying to push them into answering that question as far as what considerations have they been given for a shuttle. And I think that's great that with this project, there has been that consideration. Now, it is possible that deed restrictions could be recorded at other properties as well because you have the shuttle service. So I mean, there, there are additional considerations if we did want to continue moving forward with the deed restriction on this project. But I think that, I, I think with the parking agreement with the shuttle, I think with this project, there's enough mitigation that there, there are not going to be parking issues at this particular venue. And there's not other businesses, per se, that it's really going to impact if there are parking issues.
Well, and I, I mean, the point I would, it, it's an event center, so it's part of their business a, a, as well. So it, it's not going to thrive if they have parking issues. It's part of the logic that I use. So it's not gonna thrive if they have parking issues, is part of the logic that I use, but I, I agree with the precedent issue. The last one was a, was a, uh, house of worship, I believe, and, and there were, there were some issues pertaining to that. So there were circumstances in each of these, but I would maintain this one has it, has, uh, has those circumstances as well. But I concur with your point, that it's something worth, just 'cause, 'cause we've had similar, we had similar discussions the last time we were hung up on this one and, and, uh, this issue. So it's worthy of further discussion there. So where does that leave us?
Now, I don't know if this, if we could do something like this, could we, say that an agreement would be okay, but then if parking does become an issue, the deed restriction would have to take effect? Make a, somewhat contingent on that, if that makes sense?
Yeah, I think you would want to do one or, or the other, you know, at this point, so there's not a, because the applicant needs to know, you know, what they actually have approval for in going forward, and, and, uh, so I would suggest not conditioning it that way.
I'm ready to make a motion.
All right, Commissioner Timmerman?
I move that, uh, the planning commission recommended the city council approval of the PUD amendment for the proposed event center at twelve six hundred West Frontage Road, subject to the following conditions, with the adjustment to number four, that the, um, southernmost deck is removed, and the northwesterly deck, um, gets final approval from the fire department.
Is that it?
Can you say it one more time?
So, so, I, so I will summarize. He's making a motion with these conditions, with the fire, uh, the, the deck, fire setback issue included, and then as it stands, it would require the deed restriction for parking. And the island, correct? And the other two DV, so you'd, you'd agree with the staff?
Sorry, thank you for, for clarifying, because I was, um, I am supportive for this particular project to remove the deed restriction, so which, um...
Oh, delete, then condition ten?
Delete ten, and I would like to, um, keep the, the island requirement.
Okay. Does that, a motion make sense?
Yes, it does.
What about number twenty-one?
So there is...
Subject to...
Sorry, we're...
You're in the midst of...
Yeah, sorry, we're in the, we're in the, this isn't a debate, I'm sorry. Uh, so we have a motion on the floor. Do you understand the motion?
Yes.
Or do you second it? Or is there a second? I suppose I could second it. There's a small group I can second, too, but... This, and this motion, just for clarification there, would, would keep item twenty-one in, which would require that, that anything that's built here comply with fire department requirements for fire safety, which is, I would maintain is not unusual at all, correct? So, um, so we have a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
May I ask Deb one more question?
You, you may.
Sorry, Deb. If, um, their agreement was approved, does that make extra work for staff? Having a parking agreement versus a deed restriction?
No, it really doesn't make a difference.
Okay, okay.
So we have a motion.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion with a second. Is there any discussion on this motion?
I just wanna thank Commissioner Henderson for catching me, because I did want to address the deed restriction, so thank you for that.
All right, we're getting ready to vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. All right, so that goes to the city council on?
Next week.
April second.
April second at five thirty P M. All right, thank you. That moves us to the next item. Item four, which is a public hearing of Chase Commercial Properties LLC for a planned unit development amendment for construction of a one hundred and nine unit apartment building located at the northwest corner of Burnsville Parkway, East and Hundred and Twenty-Fifth Street East. Ms. Dean?
Good evening, Chair members of the commission.
Is there a way to turn the volume up so we can hear you?
Um, we have listening devices out in the lobby. I think there's, I think there's four available.
I don't need a listening device. I'm not hard to hear anything.
You could sit closer if you'd like, sir.
Everybody.
Well, we'll, we'll talk into our mics, okay?
Okay, so, good. So, um, the particular request is for a planning at development, um, as the chair stated. Uh, the approximate location is near Burnsville Parkway and Hundred and Twenty-Fifth Street. Um, the site is within heart of the city. Uh, just a little history about heart of the city. So, in nineteen ninety-five, um, heart of the city really kicked off. A discussion began, um, the formulation of what we now know today as heart of the city one and two. Um, our comp plan was eventually changed to align with, um, those discussions, um, really setting, uh, the stage for policy, uh, within this area. And, um, as part of that, the zoning was changed, um, for heart of the city one and two, and a design framework was established. So, the design framework, it's a, some guiding principles, um, that are associated with heart of the city one and heart of the city two zoning. We look to that, um, as a staff and policymakers, as a resource of how the area should develop. Um, it's not necessarily a set in stone, um, zoning code requirement, but it's a resource and a guide, and again, a policy framework. It, it should be looked at as, as a kind of a nimble tool. As part of the evolution of heart of the city, in, uh, two thousand and one, an EAW was completed for the area. Um, EAWs cover, um, analysis of air quality, water quality, um, traffic concerns, noise concerns, um, and, and a number of different, um, items are looked at, and, um, traffic, uh, for example, is something that is addressed. Um, at that time, the, um, city council looked at heart of the city one and heart of the city two area. Um, it was determined, after evaluating all that information, that a EIS was not required. So further study was not required. Um, they felt that, um, the heart of the city area, could fully function, um, as envisioned through the comp plan, the zoning, and the design framework. Um, for this particular site, just a little history, and in two thousand and two, Uptown Landing was approved. Uh, this was a condo, um, three-building condo development. Um, each building had thirty-seven units for a total of one hundred and eleven units. And the first phase was built, um, with parking underground. Um, there was never surface parking established as part of this approval. And sometime went on, um, the vacant property, um, which you see today, uh, went tax forfeit, changed hands, um, a couple of times, and there was a project in two thousand and fourteen that came forward, that was eventually withdrawn, for forty-four senior co-op units. Again, that was withdrawn, um, and today, Chase, um, Commercial Properties owns the, the property, and they're before us tonight with their proposal. So again, um, the heart of the city design framework calls out the area circled as, and this is the general location of the proposed Chase project, um, as having housing on it. This is the plan that's in that guiding document. It serves as, again, a resource, um, of how the area should develop as a compact, complete, connected urban environment. Um, and that vision's filling out, um, from nineteen ninety-five till, to today. We're seeing those vacant parcels, um, under construction right now as we speak. Um, this proposal is certainly in alignment with that original vision and original intent. And most recently, our two thousand and forty comprehensive plan, um, the draft, I do wanna point out that this particular property, again, circled and red, is within a quarter mile of the Nicolet Orange Line Station that's proposed, um, within one quarter mile. I do also wanna point out, um, the Burnsville Parkway Station is located here. Um, these are set to open in two thousand and twenty-one, two thousand and twenty-two. These weren't envisioned, um, during the time of the heart of the city design framework. So, these, um, transit, what we would call today transit-oriented development zones or areas, weren't envisioned then. Um, with transit-oriented development and, and within these areas or zones, we're seeing, um, less reliance on automobiles, um, more desire for multimodal transportation opportunities, um, reduction in parking standards, and in fact, um, many cities are placing parking maximums within these areas. This, I just wanna point out, um, again, just a different view, um, the site located here. The two Orange Line stations, um, are located where the stars are, bus rabid transit, again. This is frequent service that's planned and anticipated to connect people to Bloomington, Richfield, Minneapolis. Eventually, they could hook up with the Green Line, um, Blue Line, different transit opportunities, um, to and from, um, those various locations as well. It all stops in between on a very frequent service. I do also wanna point out, the green dots located throughout the map are MBTA bus stop locations. Again, this area is heavily served by transit, as it is today and in the future. Another thing to point out, um, within a quarter, a little over a quarter mile, probably closer to a third, um, is the MBTA transit location. And then there's two, a parking ramp and a parking deck that are indicated with the purple circle here in heart of the city. Those are open to the public. People can park there for up to forty-eight hours without moving their vehicle overnight. Another thing, while we're kind of talking about parking, um, when the applicant initially came in, they were requesting to, um, work with the city to request a license agreement to do overnight parking on Hundred and Twenty-Fifth Street and First Street. Since that application came in and through discussion with the applicant, um, that license agreement request is, um, no longer on the table. Parking, street parking is still available, um, however, between the hours of two A, two A M. and six A M., it's restricted. So getting back to, again, just the pro- project background, again, the, um, area is guided heart of the city. The area to the east, west, and north is also heart of the city. To the south, we have, um, high-density residential or R three B zoning. The site itself is one point eight zero acres. The specific proposal, it's a four-story, one hundred and nine-unit building, kind of a J shape that aligns at Hundred and Twenty-Fifth Street and Burnsville Parkway. The unit mix, there's eighty-two one-bedroom units and twenty-seven two-bedroom units. It's about a seventy-five, twenty-five percent split. The units per acre, sixty-one point two four. So in heart of the city, um, there is a max, I believe, of little over fif- little over fifty-six units per acre. They are asking for a deviation to that. However, I do wanna note, um, within the draft two thousand and forty comprehensive plan, heart of the city's proposed to go up to sixty units per acre. Parking proposed, there's one point five parking spaces per unit that are planned for the proposal. What that includes is one hundred and nine parking spaces underground, um, at a ratio of one to one per apartment unit. Thirty-five surface parking spaces, which actually weren't anticipated for the original Uptown Landing project. There were zero surface parking spaces that were approved. And then our city code does allow for the utilization of street parking if it's directly in front of your building. So whether it's commercial or residential, you can use those towards your, your count, your allotment. Um, and that's spelled out in our city code.
Can I ask one?
Correct.
One clarification? So it's used in this calculation, but it doesn't change the overnight parking prohibition?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you, sorry to interrupt.
Oh, no, that's fine. So eighteen spaces are along Hundred and Twenty-Fifth Street East, and then three spaces are along First Street. Um, the applicant is also proposing to add bike parking, um, not only for guests, but also within the parking garage, there's bike parking available, um, for storage, for, for the residents. Again, trying to promote a multimodal, um, atmosphere within this area. Um, I should point out one more thing about the one point five spaces per unit. The heart of the city design guidelines or design framework recommend one point five unit, or one point five parking spaces per unit as a recommendation. This is a deviation from, from our general city code requirements. The general city code requirements has a per-bedroom requirement, one-bedrooms and two-bedroom requirement, two-bedroom plus requirement, as well as guest parking. So the general standard for citywide is, is greater than what we see in heart of the city, but that was always intended from, from nineteen ninety-nine, when these guidelines were approved, when the zoning was changed. That was the intent, that we're reducing parking standards within this urban environment. Jumping to the site plan, again, it's kind of a J-shaped building. Um, north is located here. Hundred and Twenty-Fifth Street kind of curves around. South is East Burnsville Parkway. Um, again, the surface parking located here, kind of in, um, the interior of the building. Uh, there is a courtyard proposed, uh, for the enjoyment of residents, with a lot of outdoor, um, I guess, more passive type amenities, barbecue grills, benches, tables, um, heavy with landscaping. There's also sidewalk connections that connect you with the public sidewalks, which are already existing around, um, the, the roadway. There is a setback deviation that is requested for the building itself, um, as well as parking. Staff is supportive of those specific deviations. The grading plan, again, this is a vacant site. Um, it was pretty much prepped for the future buildings, um, and as development, um, moves forward, um, not a lot of changes, uh, would occur to the grading. One thing I do wanna point out back to the site plan, there is the access point, um, just off of First for the underground parking, and then the driveway to the surface parking also accesses the underground parking for the built condo unit. So there is a cross-access or joint access that, um, is in place so that the residents of the adjacent condo building, um, can still access their underground parking. There is also another access point for the condo off of Burnsville Parkway. The site's heavily landscaped, um, with perimeter landscaping, as well as landscaping in the courtyard. There are a few, uh, mature evergreens that are located on the, maybe the south, um, adjacent to Burnsville Parkway. Those will remain. The proposal exceeds our minimum landscaping requirements. Uh, this just gives you a color, um, view of the proposed site plan, as well as the, um, proposed amenity types, um, that are seen at the applicant's other apartment buildings, um, within the area, or within the metro. Um, the garage floor plan, again, the one hundred and nine parking space is underground. Within the garage, they're also proposing, um, to house the trash, and I believe there's some, some mechanical in the garage floor plan. And then just the level one layout, a mix of one and two bedrooms, level two and three, and level four. And then a color rendering of the proposal. The architectural materials do meet our minimum standards. In fact, they exceed our minimum standards for primary materials. And the proposed height is within the heart of the city max for this particular building type. The maximum height is fifty feet in heart of the city, and this is, um, forty-eight feet, eight inches. We also have a, um, minimum height requirement. I think it's thirty feet in which this would fall into place. The applicant is proposing, uh, modest wall sign and projecting signs to identify the building. They're also proposing a monument sign. Um, these are examples of what's proposed. The monument sign, um, staff does not support that request, because monument signs are prohibited within heart of the city. It is proposed on the... It is proposed on the corner of One Hundred and Twenty-Fifth and Burnsville Parkway, on private property setback, but that is something that staff does not support. Just to go over the deviations again, the applicant is requesting an increase in the, the density requirement. Again, that is something that staff is supportive. It's, it's in line with the comprehensive plan generally, and we do anticipate this area to be a more urban environment with the addition of Bus Rapid Transit, the idea of transit-oriented development to support ridership within those proposed station areas is, is encouraged. There is the decrease in parking requirement from two-hundred-and-thirty-nine spaces to one-hundred-and-sixty-five spaces. Again, that two-hundred-and-thirty-nine is referencing the general city code requirement. Again, the framework is a policy guiding document, which has that one point five parking space per unit requirement, but that is not codified. And so we need to reference the general city code when we reference any deviations. As Deb said with the previous project, we are going to be looking at parking standards citywide, as well as, we recently received a grant for transit-oriented development zoning within this area. So we will be re-examining parking within the area. My hunch is that staff will be proposing lower requirements to be codified. A decrease in the build-to-line from fifteen feet to twelve point seven feet along the West Property Line. Excuse me. That's the area where the, you enter the garage location off of First Street. And then a decrease in the build-to-line from fifteen feet to seven point two feet. This is in regards to parking. There are seven parking spaces along that West Property Line. If a deviation's not granted for this, it would eliminate those parking stalls. Staff felt that those parking stalls are necessary, and from an engineering standpoint, they didn't have any concerns with encroachments within that area for parking. And then a deviation's requested to allow monument signs within Heart of the City. They're prohibited, so staff does not support that. There are benefits whenever we're looking at planning at developments. What are the benefits to the city? How is this different or unique? How does this align with our city policies? Staff feels that this is an amenity-rich proposal with indoor and outdoor amenities. The building design's consistent with the design framework, and the architecture exceeds our minimum requirements. Landscaping exceeds our minimum requirements, and the additional residential density is something that is beneficial to the future Orange Line, Bus Rapid Transit stations within Heart of the City. Police, Fire, and Building Department have no outstanding concerns with the proposed land use. Engineering considerations, stormwater has been accommodated on site, and the applicant is aware of the proposed development fees based off of park dedication, sewer and water fees as well. Planning considerations, the applicant did host two neighborhood meetings in preparation of the project. The applicant's no longer requesting that license agreement to allow overnight parking. The proposal's consistent with the Heart of the City Design Framework. The architecture and landscaping exceeds the minimum requirements, and this is consistent, again, with TOD and the comprehensive plan. With that, staff does recommend approval according to the conditions below. The applicant is here and would like to make a presentation as well. You can certainly ask questions of me now if you have any, or Chair, if you'd like to wait until after the applicant presents.
I've got a couple of questions, and I don't know if the other commissioners may. So, and this has to do, you, you explained the, the parking, the framework for Heart of the City, the existing projects within Heart of, Heart of the City. Are they within that framework, so are they lower than city ordinance?
So, they, they range. So, for example, the Roar's AAA building on Seven Travelers Trail, it's currently under construction. That was approved at one point three parking spaces per unit. The Chase development in, next to Cub that was approved, that's currently in litigation. I believe that one was approved at one point three-six or one point four. There are others that have been approved at two per unit. It, it kind of, it's ranged throughout the years, and it seems like as we get closer to realizing that this is really an urban environment, a more transit-oriented environment, that we've reduced the parking standards.
And then, the monument sign issue, are there, are there any deviations granted to other projects? I, I honestly can't think that I've seen any.
There, there may be one at the Cub Foods location where they did a more of a, not necessarily a monument sign, but a area identification sign, but I can't think of any other ones that I've, that I'm aware of.
Questions for Ms. Dean? Okay, we can hear from the applicant then, if you'd like to come up and identify yourself.
From over here.
Welcome.
Thank you. My name is, can everyone hear me? My name is Joe McWayne, and I am with Chase Real Estate. I am Development Manager and an Architect with the office. I do have a presentation tonight. I'd like to just give everybody a kind of overall feel of what the project, the character of the project, and get everybody comfortable with what we're proposing, and then, of course, stand for any questions. So let's get started. First off, I'd like to just introduce who Chase Real Estate is. We've been in Burnsville and officing in Burnsville for the last thirty years. Prior to Chase Real Estate, it was under Homes by Chase, and that was a single-family development company, and built somewhere between two and three thousand homes in the late, in the mid-nineties and the early two thousands. Since then, over approximately the last ten or twelve years, we've been mainly focusing on multifamily housing. And some of these are the images of our last projects over the last eight to ten years, primarily in St. Paul, but Eagan, Apple Valley. But we are a development, ownership, and management company all-in-one. We really just focus on one project a year, and we put really all of our heart into one project a year. And we're super excited about this one because it's in our backyard, we're off County Road Forty-two. We frequent the area quite often. So, the Heart of the City, and what makes the Heart of the City exciting is all of the amenities, the connection to transit, the grocery store, the Performance Center, and this is what makes it so appealing, I think, for future residents. It is interesting to always look back at the master plans, working on other projects throughout the city. It's, it's always interesting to, to know that it's been twenty to thirty years in the making, and it's taken the second kind of market to really come around and see something that was envisioned almost really a generation ago. And we were approved, if you remember, two years ago, we were before you for the Nicolet Plaza project, which I'm highlighting here. That will possibly be built next year, depending. And then, of course, what we're working on tonight is the Uptown Landing property. So we always do our due diligence and see what was originally proposed. And what I've highlighted here in purple is the footprint of the two thousand four, two thousand three proposal. And I'd like to note that we have basically the same footprint. It's about a thirty-thousand-score-foot building footprint, four stories. And in all, I think it's important to talk about how many bedrooms. As Regina noted, something that was different fifteen years ago is, all these condos were mainly two-bedroom, and these were actually two-bedroom and loft plans. And so when you really count the bedrooms, we're nearly identical, and that's really what informs parking, is how many bedrooms. And when we started looking at the footprint, we had to make the access agreement, had to make that work, and we wanted site parking, and we actually built more parking underground. This courtyard is actually a planted courtyard, and I'll show you images here in a moment. And another part of the Heart of the City goal is fronting the street with the building. So I, I think this plan actually works a little better because we're going to have a real nice building front Burnsville Parkway. Here's a summary on, I mean, Regina went over this, but really, how many stalls per bedroom when you take into account our neighbors. Park Crest, about point nine-seven stalls per, per beds, when you consider they have a hundred and fifty-nine stalls in the garage, Uptown Landing, in our proposed project, all in that kind of similar window of parking. In terms of traffic, because, well, the engineers look over this, but the math made it so that we were quite under the peak amount of trips that didn't require a new traffic study. So I'd like to talk a little bit about the design, which we're excited about. This top right photo was provided to us by Cos Wilson Architects, who are, who we typically work with. We wanted to complement kind of the beige color of the neighborhood, but not overpower it. So I think we're really looking for a beige base. We like more traditional design. I think that's more fitting with the Heart of the City guidelines, so base, middle, top. But I think the most of the building is really this, what we were showing here, is this limestone base, brick, and something we're already doing, which is all metal, which is a metal panel concealed fastener. There's no, no fiber cement on this project, there's no Hardy or LP. We're really looking for, you know, building materials that have integrity. This, this project was built a couple of years ago by us in St. Paul. You'll, you'll see the, the metal panel and the large windows we do. And then we do have a complementary brick that, I forget the name, but it's a little more orange and speaks back to the Nicolet, or I mean, the Uptown Landing project. And we'll also utilize some stone near the entries. Here is the entry off the courtyard. You'll have a big open glass here because we're going to have a two-story lobby. We'll put stone on the entry off the One Hundred and Twenty-Fifth, and we're going to put stone along this three-story mass that fronts the Parkway. Here, I'll show you an image on this corner, I think where the, the building starts to angle. I think it was important for us to bump that out and provide a little more character so that the building's just not the same as you go around the whole One Hundred and Twenty-Fifth. So here, we're actually recessing the balconies at the top. We're doing some kind of like chimney effect, and lots of windows. So I think this was, I'm excited about this part of the building as well. I'll just note that these renderings are coming out a little dark in these, in these corners. Really, this is the color. It's a dark bronze, you know? Again, here's the site plan and how we thought about how the middle of the building is where all the commons and the access between the building will occur. We want, wanted people to be able to get to the grocery store and get out on the street right through the middle of the building, and also have the amenities and the courtyard accessible. These images over here are a project we completed a couple of years ago. There is parking underneath of this, so we will have, it's, it's a super-deep section of concrete, but we also have upwards of three feet of soil that we berm up and actually provide, you know, lots of plantings. This was actually taken six months after it was built, so it's a lot more full now, two years later. We'll also provide some monument piers, just as a sense of entry when you walk up to the, the courtyard. And I know it's a little early, but we're thinking about how we sequence our amenity spaces through this part of the building. So if you notice, we're, we're calling it the gallery on, on the Parkway. And so I think you enter into, you know, a really wide fourteen-foot hallway where we can have an opportunity to showcase some artwork. But this is entry on both sides, so it really leads you to the two-story lobby, you know, a nice grand stair. And the amenities that these properties are getting anymore just continue to grow and grow. So we're starting to look at cellar rooms and secret doors, and how can our residents have private dining? More and more people are having Thanksgivings and holiday parties, wedding showers at our properties. So how we can start to section a few of those clubrooms off for privacy. Still have a gym, have a yoga, that's going to be a flex room. It's also going to be a crafts room part of the day, which is why we have a lot of storage. And these are some of our images from last project. So the two-story lobby, a typical clubroom, lots of brick and wood, wood ceilings, a design that will really last, I think, for a long time. These are some of the images of what we're trying to make this, this project special, with, with the stair in the lobby, and maybe some cool cellar-like experiences. When it comes to unit plans, the average square foot here is probably in the low nine hundreds, but it's a one-plus den. This is our most common unit plan in this project. A den sizable for an office. There are some larger one-plus dens, which could be a bedroom. But we have five stacks of these two-bedroom corner unit plans, because there's five corners of the building. And this is a very successful, a unit plan of ours. I'll just show you the images. This is lots of square footage of glass, wood floors, granite. Some of those corners might have upgraded appliances. We're doing a lot of built-in buffets now as well, so. And I, I put that image in there to show you that we're also thinking about our corridors. We also trim our corridors, we put picture rail. There's a lot of detailing that goes in. So it's a lot of fun. So I would like to answer any questions you may have at this point.
Thank you very much. Commissioners, any questions? Commissioner Timmerman? You look like you're pondering a question.
I am, but I might come back after the, the public hearing. Very nice presentation, thank you.
And you said, so you will be the operator of it, Chase will be the operator of it?
Yes, certainly, Stonebridge. And we do have Carrie here, if there's any questions for her.
Okay. All right, thank you very much. Do we have additional questions for Ms. Dean or the applicant? Or would go to, right to the public hearing? All right. Seven fifty-two PM, we're going to open the public hearing. I'm going to go with the, with the folks on this list first, and if you could come up and identify yourself and your address. Sue, is it Growthy?
Actually, I don't have anything.
Okay. Next is Barbara Felt. Welcome. Yep. You could just come up and identify yourself, and we've got, we've got your address, so you don't need to give us your address unless you want to.
Anyway, my name is Barbara Felt, and I'm a resident at Park Crest, which is immediately adjacent to this property. If I should stick back a little farther. I've been a resident in Burnsville since nineteen seventy-one, aside from a few years when I was in college and grad school. I'm owning my fifth home in Burnsville right now at Park Crest. Previously, I lived in South River Hills, I've lived in North River Hills, I've lived in Itoka Valley Townhomes Association in northeast Burnsville, where for the entire time I lived there, I was president of the homeowners association because nobody else ever wanted the job. And I couldn't get anyone to vote or run for it after that. So I had to move to get out of there, but that's not really my life. Then I moved back to North River Hills, and I've also lived, when I was younger, in Birmingham Apartments, if some of you might, some of you might recall those. So I've been here for a long time. I've been in Park Crest for about two years now. It's a great ambiance, the neighborhood is wonderful, there's a lot of families there, there's a lot of children. They have, are buses that come in during the day, and they get it, get there right at one of the corner streets. It's actually pretty busy. It's a crowded area. I mean, I, in the last couple of winters, there's been times when I was coming up the hill from down where the Cub is, and there would be a bus coming down One Hundred and Twenty-Fifth. And because of the snow and the weather and the ice, the bus couldn't actually turn to go down the hill until I would back down. So it's, it's a tight area, and there's a lot of people in there. And so it's a big concern to me that there's going to be some, I think, inadequate parking in this new complex that they're proposing right next door to us. Let me say, I don't have a problem with the building going in. I think that's a great idea to fill that space. But I think we need to make sure that the standards used for that construction to be finished need to be adequate for what we're dealing with in that neighborhood. And based on my assessment of the materials, and I might say that I found the materials to be a little bit incomplete in terms of what I was looking for. to be a little bit incomplete in terms of what I was looking for online. So I'm wondering, and some of my colleagues asked if we can get a copy of what's in that binder out there in terms of the project at some point in the near future. So that would be one thing. But we do have, there's, like I said, there's a lot of kids there. There's a lot of traffic in certain times of the day. Obviously, other times it's less a big of an issue. But we have, even now, before that building has been started, there's problems with parking. We know that some of our businesses have problems right now with their own customers who they can't find the spots to go in and go into the units or go into those organizations, you know, and spend their money in Burnsville, which of course we want them to do. We want to support those businesses as well. And again, I think bringing in what appears to me, based on my reading of some of the numbers, and there's been a lot of different numbers on these materials, but it looks to me like we will be probably short about 75 to 100 parking spaces. And so the question is, you know, if you bring in a building with, you know, 75 to 100 people trying to find parking that can't find it, we've got a problem and it needs to be addressed before this is put together and this is put to bed because we need to make sure that we don't lose the character of this neighborhood, something that is clearly indicated in some of the materials I've seen before in terms of like, I think it's called, what is it called? The Heart of the City Mission Statement, which clearly says that one of the things is the, or the mission statement says, "The mission of the Heart of the City of Burnsville is to create an attractive," I read that with all my glasses, "vibrant pedestrian-friendly neighborhood setting in which the residents and visitors can enjoy with their families and with the Burnsville citizens." Let's see, got something here. And then it says basically about the true sense of community and partnership in the area. But again, they're talking about a pedestrian-friendly neighborhood and we want that, that, we have that now and we want to keep that. And so I think we really have to be careful in terms of how we develop this and how we go forward and how it's finalized. I did want to state, I mean, I sent some materials to the panel this morning and I know that's kind of short notice, so with your permission, I'll just sort of read the questions that came to my mind as I was going through the packet for this hearing. And so I wanted to.
Yeah, Ms. Felt, can I, absolutely, you can go through those. I just, I forgot in my introduction to tell folks, so this is not actually a question-and-answer period, so we won't answer. But if you ask those questions, we, you know, that we, as, in the next stage, do the debate process, so.
Yes.
Just so people aren't expecting us to go line by line and answer a bunch of questions right now, so.
Correct. And I didn't ask for the answers.
Right, right, right. No, I just, I didn't usually say that at the introduction and I forgot this time, so.
Yeah, it's a list of questions that came to my mind after looking at the materials in the packet, the agenda packet. And then things that I think at some point in the near future, we need to have some dialogue about these or have some consensus so that we know that we're moving forward, kind of with the best interest of the community. So what I take from this, and it looks like there may be some other issues, but what I see in a look at the materials, we really have two issues. It's the parking issue and it's the whether or not we allow overnight parking for those residents who are allowed to park. I do see that there has been, it sounds like maybe Chase has lifted that requirement on the overnight parking. But it seems to me that it might be tabled. And I think we need to deal with that issue right now as the building goes up because that building's going to be around for 45, 50 years, I would imagine, I would hope. And so we need to have the parking plan worked out now because down the road, Chase will be out of the picture and then all of a sudden it'll be our problem to fix that. At that point, it's really hard to rebuild a building or redo the parking that's established for that building. So in terms of those concerns, the questions that came to my mind were, the first one was the question of why were we loose, are we loosening the apartment size to parking space ratio for Chase? Because I always understood that the space was based on whether or not you have a one-bedroom, a two-bedroom, a two, you know, three-bedroom, this sort of thing, and they had different categories. And so my question was, why is that being changed? And maybe you'll correct me and tell me that it's not that, but that's what I've been seeing in some of the materials and there's some inconsistent information about that. So I was wondering why that was being changed. Because it strikes me that what, you know, especially with the overnight parking issue, that maybe what's happening is Chase wants to get out of that obligation, you know, by having it sort of lifted for three years and then all of a sudden we have to go back and deal with that again. So I'd like to see that addressed and some consensus on that. I asked if a traffic study had been completed about that area in terms of how the, the additional traffic would interact with the current traffic that we have there, all the individuals that are going into the various complexes that are there now, as well as a real concern of mine, which are those children that are getting on the bus at that corner. They are, as I think one of my colleagues put in one of his submissions, they're kind of a rambunctious bunch. I've had them come out and just whack my car on the side, some of those kids. So they're kids, they're out there and we need to be sure that we keep them safe. So in connection with the traffic study, I think I heard the representative from Chase indicated that somehow that wasn't required now in this situation. I guess I would like more information about that and why that isn't required. I wondered if there may be had many discussions with Chase about building a two-level underground parking structure, which would immediately resolve a problem, I would think. And so, you know, what the outcome was of those discussions. I also had questions about the counting of street spaces in order to use that as part of your parking requirements. How many people or how many complexes can count the same spaces? I'm just wondering how many times they can get counted and at what point do we have so many people assigned by counting those spaces that they're really not anywhere near what they need? So that was a question of mine. And then I was wondering too, if the city allows this additional traffic, the way it's proposed now by the builder, you know, what is the city prepared to do to help deal with these ongoing parking problems that I expect we will have in the future? I do know that the Grand Market Complex across, from us, across on the other side of Nicollet and then over by the Ames Center, they have a, one unit, one parking stall policy. But the city provides them with free parking, free parking in that ramp that's right adjacent to their building. So I wondered if you had any proposals for what we were going to do if we get in line with the parking situations, which based on what I know so far, is extremely likely to happen. So those are some of my concerns. I may have more as we get into more of the materials and, but those are the questions that come to my mind.
Okay. Thank you very much. Next, we have Don Atkinson. Welcome, sir.
Thank you. My name is Don Atkinson. I also live at the Park Crest condominiums on Nicollet. And we're just west of the, of the proposed building now. And, you know, we're, we're happy to see that a building come in there and we're concerned about traffic is the main thing. But, but we understand that it's a project, that it's a planned development and regulatory standards of the zoning ordinance can be modified through the PV process. However, the zoning standards that were created in 1999 that apply to the subject property were developed directly from the HOC framework and are a valid representation of the city's vision for development within the Heart of the City. These standards should not be modified to the extent requested by the developer. City staff has stated that the anticipated parking for HOC according to the Design Framework Manual is one and a half parking spaces per unit or 164 parking spaces. The applicant is proposing 165 parking spaces and the proposal meets this requirement. But we contend that the one and a half parking ratio from the Framework Manual has been incorrectly applied to this project. Specifically, the city has incorrectly applied a guideline from the framework and disregarded the zoning ordinance requirements that guide parking. Reduction in required parking from levels set by ordinance will adversely affect the use and enjoyment of other properties in this area. There are two relevant documents that apply. Heart of the City Framework Manual. The framework was adopted as part of the city's 1999 comprehensive plan update. The framework is not a regulatory document by itself, but is a guide for future policy development. Zoning Ordinance. The framework led to the creation of a new zoning district, the Heart of the City District, which applies specifically to the Heart of the City. This district was adopted as an amendment to the zoning ordinance in August of 1999. The zoning ordinance is a regulatory document. Text from the HOC framework regarding parking. Parking will consist of a combination of on- and off-street surface parking, surface interior parking, and parking structures. The overall ratio as illustrated in the Town Center Plan equals four parking spaces per 1,000 feet of commercial space and 1.5 parking spaces per residential unit. As the Heart of the City District evolves and develops, the overall ratio will be reduced to three parking spaces per 1,000 square feet of commercial space. This is a guideline for the overall parking for the entire HOC. If the city chooses to follow the framework and disregard the zoning ordinance, then at least apply the standard accurately. If this would be, if this would be to apply, be to be applied, I'll get it out pretty quick, accurately, a parking analysis of the entire HOC should be completed to determine what the overall ratio is for the HOC currently and how this individual project would affect the overall ratio. The Framework Manual led to adoption of zoning ordinance amendments to ensure the vision of HOC was in, was implemented through regulatory channels on a project-by-project basis. HOC zoning districts were created and developed standards were adopted for each district. The HOC zoning district addresses parking requirements for residential development within the district. Excuse me. Parking requirements for residential units in the HOC district provided more detail than the simple overall ratio of the framework. Parking for residential uses shall be provided onsite, shall be calculated as required under Section 10-7-26 of this title, shall be specifically reserved for the use of residents and visitors only, separate from any commercial office or other uses onsite or nearby, and shall not be counted as part of any shared parking or joint parking arrangement. City Code 10-7-26 requires 1.5 parking spaces for each efficiency and one-bedroom unit, 2.25 parking spaces for units with two or more bedrooms. A minimum of one of the required parking spaces per unit should be enclosed garage space. .5 space per townhouse or apartment unit distributed throughout the development in addition to the required parking per unit. We ask that you apply the correct parking ratio found in Section 10-7-26 of the City Code and requires that the plans be amended to show the required park, amount of parking to be 239 spaces. Density. The justification by city staff to allow additional density beyond the required minimum is based on the original plan for the property. Only a portion of this plan was built. However, this is a new, new project by a different developer on a separate parcel. Each project must be analyzed on an individual basis and take all, all development factors into account. If the original density is desired, then the identical configuration of the original project should be proposed instead of the current design. If density is being increased beyond the maximum allowed by ordinance, then the parking certainly should not be decreased below the minimum required by the ordinance.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Mark Lauterboch. Did I get it close? Landerboch, no, that's a U.
Thank you. It's Mark Lauterboch.
Looks like an S.
Couple of things. I'm going to start out not talking, talking about parking, okay? First thing is, and it's a question, which you said you wouldn't answer, but I think Andy did a good job in his architect of the building, rendering, what it's going to look like. How do we ensure it ends up looking like that? Okay? This first part of this. And then on First Avenue, sorry, we're, I'm in Park Crest, so we're right across First Avenue. And I'm concerned about street lighting. What lighting would be there in regard to how is it going to affect our residents on that side, on the east side of our building? I mean, are they going to have big lights shining in their windows? I mean, how's that going to be handled? The 1.5 HOC requirement, we have both sides, it's about 1.5, let's talk about that. Is that, do those spaces have to be overnight, all of them, or a combination? Because I think it makes a difference. You know, I, I look at it, there's 109 units under the garage, 35 on site, that's 144 units, which is on their site and can be overnight parked. Okay? Which is like 87% of the 165 actually required. That's pretty strong. So, yeah, I think that's adequate. Okay? So what I'm getting at is, I don't see, there's already public parking on 125, it's already there. They can park there, we can park there. But I don't want to see that overnight parking. I don't think there's a reason for it due to the number of spaces, the high percentage of spots that can be overnight on, on Andy's site. Okay? The other thing, I saw some reference in here to the, I guess parking have, they can possibly park down on Nicollet and 125. There's, how many spots there? I forget, 25? That's that parking lot that was built there or left there. That's where the original developer had their offices and then it was, the city turned it into a parking lot. It's not overnight parking and it really was intended for the commercial businesses in the building. We have Jojos and we have the bridal shop. They depend on those spaces, as do the ones along our building, the diagonal ones on the north side of our building. So I'm not sure, it's my understanding that like, say on 125, you could not dedicate those parking stalls to the project, Andy's project, because they're available to anybody. So that leads me to say, well then how could they be included in the on-paper meeting of the rules for parking when they might not be available? You know? Now, we, we have on our side of the building, on the east side of the building, the city agreed, we could have overnight parking there. There's like 18, 20 stalls. We went over and got that arranged at Park Crest, but they're really not dedicated to us. Anybody can really park. So I think there needs to be, if you're going to use the parking spaces to meet a regulation, then I think there needs to be some dedication of those spaces. Otherwise, it doesn't make sense to me. Everybody, I'm going to repeat what everybody else has been saying, so I won't do it. Just a note, she did a good job when I came over to talk to her. I'm sure she dealt with a lot of people, so.
Thank you, sir. Next is Michelle Beck. Welcome.
Hi, thank you. Yes, I'm Michelle Beck. I'm the owner of Bridal Accents Couture located in the Park Crest building. I moved the business over there in 2013 from Savage. It's been wonderful. The Heart of the City has welcomed us and it's been going very well. I'm really excited to hear about the new development happening. I think it's wonderful. The building looks beautiful. My concern is parking. My clients currently My clients currently have trouble finding parking at some points. It's especially when the residents come home in the evenings and on Saturdays, which happen to be my busiest days and my best revenue days, I need my clients to be able to have a parking space. I'm asking for consideration of dedicated parking for the Park Crest commercial businesses in front of our, on the north side on 125th Street, if there could be dedicated spots for commercial parking, or for the Park Crest building, you know, businesses and residents only, to ensure that I have space for my clients to come in and find a spot. They're carrying wedding dresses out, they're carrying eight bridesmaids dresses out, they want a spot in front of our store, and I want them to be able to be able to come in and find a spot and be able to continue a successful business there. Thank you.
Thank you. And the last on the list that we have is Sue Shorn. Did I say that right? Welcome.
So I'm not used to doing this so much. So I just recently moved into Park Crest, Nicollet, and, you know, was a little apprehensive. I have kind of a really good friend or two there, but a little concerning because I've sold real estate for the last 30 years and south of the river. Lived in Burnsville for a long time, moved out of Burnsville because it unfortunately, you know, kind of has become the redheaded stepchild south of the river, you know, and it's kind of a bummer because I think, we've got the killer views, we're the most convenient, but it just seems like there have been some poor decisions made. The heart of the city was a fantastic idea, and it just seems like lots of low-income housing, and I know some of that's part of our world and whatever, and I know that if it's zoned a certain way, it has to, you know, be built that way, and, but I hope we don't dumb it down, you know, keep dumbing it down, we're just, you know, we're already at Park Crest probably, well, in those townhouses just to the north of us, you know, the high end of the area, and it's like, oh, come on, quit, you know, and those renderings they were showing, it's like, are they, we were looking at a bunch of two-bedroom plus den or one-bedroom plus den, but are they really talking one-bedroom or one-plus? You know, I mean, I'd rather see bigger ones with, you know, fewer parking, and I don't agree that one-bedroom means dictates, oh, I'm nervous, I'm not saying it right, but that guy, the fancy attorney guy that knows how to speak, you know, was saying, whoa, this means this, but no, it doesn't, he's wrong. But, because, I mean, I live in a, in one of the bigger units in my, in the building, I'm just, me, I need one parking space. But, okay, so, I don't want to say that. Well, and I, somebody else already asked, will the building look like the rendering? We've got a, we've got a beautiful picture of what our building's supposed to look like in the lobby. Doesn't look like that, unfortunately. They didn't finish the top detail that would make it really nice looking, but maybe when we redo the roof, we'll get that, I don't know. Anyway, I just think we shouldn't, I don't know, I hope you guys are careful. I know of a whole bunch of condos and apartment buildings that Andy's built that I think look really nice, you know, so I'm not having any issue there. Man, I love that idea. Is it, you know, unrealistic to do two levels of parking? Because it is already really bad. So, and then lastly, just, you know, maybe if they could just put a microbrewery on the main floor, and that could be like open to empty nester happy hour, like, I want to get one free after 2:00 PM because we are in bed by 4:00, I don't know. That's all.
Thank you. Okay, so that's all we have on our list. Are there others who would like to speak? If you could come up and introduce yourself. We'll go him first and then...
This will just take one minute. My name's Dave Watt, I live on 44125th Street, so I walk by that with, I'm like that guy with the dog, I walk by there four times a day. I love that picture, and I honestly hope you guys can come in and enhance the neighborhood, but parking, I am not convinced it won't be a major problem. And the problem with that gorgeous picture is there's no cars parked on that street, which they're always there, even without that building, there's always cars parked there, lots of them. So, to say that there's not going to be a problem is wrong, it's already a problem like several have said, so.
Thank you. Sir. Introduce yourself and your address for the record, please.
Hello, my name's David Anderson, I live in the Parkway Co-op across the street. We're on the end unit, so we're facing where they're going to build that, and that's basically going to take away our nice view of the downtown area and so forth, which we're okay with that, but as I watched out the window, especially during the summer, and you see those kids coming and going, and that street is not wide as primarily as it should be, but I, and coming out of the Parkway Co-op parking lot, that street going by there, Burnsville Parkway is very busy, busier than what I expected it to be when I moved in there. And there's been numerous close calls, if not accidents, on those corners or close to them. I know I've been, been close to some of them myself, so that's going to increase traffic considerably. And I like the look of the building, and if you're thinking about the parking, maybe you could only make it a three-story instead of a four.
Thank you. Welcome. Name and address for the record, please.
I'm Tom Bruin, and I live at Park Crest 401 Nicollet Avenue in Park Crest. Not going to reiterate a lot of things I've said, I'm excited about a building going in next door also. I think a lot of people are pretty excited here, and the reason you're getting a large audience is somewhat from misinformation, and I just want to go over that, I guess I'm not going to point too many fingers, but it really ramped this up to the point it is now. One was, as the traveling show to bring the proposal out to people, I was at one, and we were told that, yes, the city of Burnsville allowed on-street parking 24 hours a night, they made a special exception for this project along 125th, which really burned me, because for years, and I've been there 12 years, we've been told, they're not going to ever be on-street parking here, and it's for the safety of not only the police, but the citizens there, increased crime, things of that sort. So I really bugged that they would come out to these meetings and say, yes, we have already gotten approval from the city. So I did write to the city, and I asked about this, and I was told, yeah, the planning department and the engineering department have already given their okay for this, which really surprised me. Wrote again, and next letter came and said, we know nothing about this, we've never heard about this. And this is all within the last three weeks. Lots of confusion here, okay? Then in the midst of this, just in the last couple of days, we read that, yes, the license has been, you know, they've taken back the license or whatever they needed to do to get the on-street parking, you know, and this, you know, communicating that to people that are interested in it really is tough, because not everybody's reading the city webpages. And then I'll sort of read as you go through the proposal further on, that, you know, that, again, that on-street parking will be revisited if needed. So, again, I guess kind of this is the parking thing, but also, that corner, take a look at that very closely, where you have the section eight buildings, they have lots of kids there, and it is a mess in the morning, and you're adding 109 cars. Let's just say they have 109, every one of those apartments just has one car. You know, I've been told, we don't have to worry about that, that these are millennials, they'll be walking to the bus station. You know, number one, that isn't going to happen. Number two, these people, if there are two people in the apartment, probably will have two cars, I mean, that makes sense. Number three, we aren't Minneapolis, we're still heart of the city, Burnsville, and if somebody comes home on the bus from Minneapolis and needs to go to Target, they're going to take their car. So those cars are going to be going in and out. In that little space, you've got all the cars from Park Crest making a right-hand turn on 125th to get on first, matter of 20 feet, 20 yards maybe at the most. You have the people coming out of the new proposed apartments, which again, I support, I don't want to see that empty lot anymore. Lots of dog turds in there, let's get a building in, okay? And then you have the other condos, they're all coming out at the same time of the day. About three days after we heard there was going to be on-street parking, I happened to be walking that morning, and a truck was trying to come out on that little stub on First, I think Avenue it is, and it was backing up. And I thought, this is going to be perfect, this is going to kind of be how the future is. And we had four stops there, and there were cars backed up four or five deep, waiting for this truck to back out of that little stub. Keep in mind, they're all coming out of one little area. And, you know, I'm not sure how that can be rectified, but that's going to be a real problem in the future, and I agree with our first speaker who said, we got to get this figured out before it's being built, because once it's built, it's over. And I expect they'll revisit the on-street parking, which I haven't included yet, and those total numbers will come up, and we won't get the number of people here to talk about it, but. So, in summary, I think that's why you see a lot of people here, there was lots of information going out, it wasn't always right from the city. It seemed as more and more letters came to the cities that the plans started to change a little bit, and, you know, of course, the focus today was on parking, so they obviously knew that that was a hot issue, but that's what I had to say. Thanks.
Thank you. Sir. Welcome.
Hi, my name's Daniel Mosher, I live in Park Crest, Unit 308. From 30,000 feet there on the third floor, I could see the people coming into Jojos and to the bridal shop, and I do think there will be, if for some reason parking comes down the street, they will have issues, and those businesses will probably be the one who get hurt the most. That's just my biggest concern. One of the things that I think I read was that of the 109 units, each unit gets one unit or one spot in the garage? Just want to make sure there's something in there that says that at some point they can say, oh, we're now going to charge $100 for the garage, and then suddenly someone says, well, I can't afford that, I'm displaced out on the street, and if you get 20 additional cars and then empty spots, I just want to make sure that that provision is there so that the landlord can't suddenly change that course, because that could have an impact that nobody's mentioned here tonight. So, it looks like a beautiful building, and I will welcome something there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jeff Jertie, 46 East 125th Street. We exit from our houses in the heart of Burnsville, is in the heart of Burnsville, almost directly cross from the Park Crest ramp in and out. So, we know very well that, for instance, picture that intersection of 125th and First Avenue. Picture a garbage truck that's parked on 125th while they have to go down into Park Crest and bring up the dumpster and roll it arduously in a way. And then think about the school buses on the corner, then think about the moving vans, because people are moving in and out of these buildings, and the moving vans also park on 125th Street. I mention this because, referring to the earlier sale of our property on the northeast quadrant, many questions were asked about emergency vehicles' ability to move in and out of that area. And as I get older, I care more about ambulances than fire trucks, but I still see someday we could have a calamity situation there. So I'm just echoing what our first speaker said so well and what our last speaker said so well. There can be almost a perfect storm of congestion in that intersection.
Thank you. Additional comments? Ma'am, welcome.
Thank you. My name is Sharon Iverson, and I live in the senior cooperative across the street, and we have 102 units, but on 13 acres. And this proposal is 1.8 acre, eight acres with 109 units. What I'm thinking is, we've had so many problems with parking in our lot, because we have a large lot out in front, plus all of our underground parking. And when that condo across the street went up with no guest parking, they were parking in our lot constantly. We had to put up signs that you will be towed, and they will be towed. Also, if the project could just be smaller, a bit smaller, it wouldn't be so densely populated and congested in there. So that's my issue also in all people in our building. One of the fellows, in fact, that lived in our building, was killed on Burnsville Parkway, it's such a busy street. Now, I don't know if this will be exiting, I would think they could go around and come out 125th. But anyway, I think that's all, you know, what we all think, it's so densely populated and the parking is. Those units are, you know, there's going to be more than one car for those units, so as everyone else has said, where do they park? And they will be parking along that street all the way down there, most, I don't know what it said, 35 surface, I think they're including the street parking on that. But, anyway, that's how I feel. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional comments? Going once, going twice. Okay, we will close the public hearing at 8:31 PM. Commissioners, would you like to start, or would you like me to start? Ms. Dean and the gentleman from Chase, I'll start, if I could, could I start with a question for you? In follow-up to this, the thing I forgot to ask, and I've, in some of the materials, I've heard that this is going to be focused on millennials, that it's going to be focused on seniors, what would you say is your target demographic?
Mark.
That's an appropriate question, I mean, that's...
I wouldn't say we have a target, what we try is to design for and appeal to a crowd that we think will live there. What we've noticed in the last several years is our 50-plus crowd is growing over 20%. We do own a building four miles north next to the Eagan Outlet Mall, it's called the Flats at Cedar Grove. I think we have something like 23% to 24% of 50 and over. My mother-in-law lives in our last apartment, she's single, she rents a two-bedroom, and she loves the design. And when you walk down the hallways, you see a mix of people, but what I'll say is that it's generally 24 to 32, and there's a gap, and then there's 50 and over. Our first renter at that beautiful project you saw, V2, was actually 74, only lives there half of the year and lives in Florida, but I will say the average age is 34, and I think we're kind of trying to make it a little older in terms of empty nesters at this property.
And how do you, obviously this application has a certain parking associated with it, how do you respond to, I mean, the question about, obviously, from my perspective, you're building a building you want people to move into, obviously, and if you don't have enough parking, nobody's going to move, nobody's going to move in there. So how do you, how do you respond to some of these parking questions about, I mean, is it a lifestyle issue?
No, well, I mean, it's like any business, if you don't provide parking, no one's going to live there. If you don't provide parking for your customers, no one's going to shop there, especially in new, in new construction buildings are super expensive. My point is, is that in a new property, people expect the amenities, the high-end finishes, and they expect an enclosed heated garage stall. We have car washes in our garage, we have pet washes in our basements. So that is the expectation, and that's what we have to provide. In fact, it's the only city I know of that provides, requires one-to-one underground. Most of our properties have about 8.8, 8.5 stalls underground, we supplement that outside, but here, it's nearly the same balance. We won't rent apartments if we don't provide enough, we want to get it financed, so we think about all those measures, yes.
Okay. Any additional questions for the applicant? Commissioner Timmerman?
I have a couple of follow-up questions just after hearing some of the neighborhood comments.
Microphone.
Thank you. I didn't want it to pick up my typing. So, safety is a huge concern, I think that is something that we've heard here, and I do want to ask what has been looked at for this particular project as far as ensuring the safety and accessibility of fire department, ambulances, and, I mean, to an extent, anything outside of the bounds of this parking area are not necessarily your responsibility, but I'm curious, what thought process have you had throughout this project?
Well, we started with making sure that our parking entry to the garage was on a dead-end street, so that's up First Avenue. We thought that that was the, get it off the Parkway, get it down to us for a little more quiet, we believe, and then I think most traffic is going to go down to Traveler's Trail and then get on Nicollet that way. We look at trips per day.
Excuse me?
Okay, yeah.
We need to be respectful of folks at the podium.
We need to, um, be respectful of folks at the podium. Thank you. You, they were, we've been respectful of everyone else, so please do the same for-
But this is why we work with the city engineers. I mean, we started six months ago working on this project. We also have two years of experience working on another project down the street with traffic studies, so, um, other regards of safety, we don't have a rooftop patio. I know that oftentimes those are recommended. We don't do that for fire safety. We have metal del, metal balconies, um, so we don't have any fire code problems with that. Um, uh, we work with your city engineers. I can't think of anything else.
Ms. Dean had a point.
If I can just add, um, as part of any application that goes through the city process, it's in front of our departments, the police department, building department, engineering department, fire department, planning, parks and rec, natural resources. And, um, that's our opportunity as a staff to, um, review the plans, comment, work through any issues, um, which things come up throughout the process and, and get resolved, um, through the process. Specifically with life safety, um, our fire department feels that the street roadway widths are adequate, um, for emergency vehicles. Um, they didn't have any concerns with access to the units. Um, I think that came up with a different apartment project where they were afraid that their ladder truck couldn't reach. Um, that was not the case here. Um, as far as traffic, um, itself, uh, through that EAW process, traffic was evaluated for Heart of the City as a whole. And then specifically, the number of units that are proposed aren't significantly greater than what was approved back in two thousand and four. Um, so from a, a staff standpoint, we didn't see this as, um, triggering a traffic study, um, or an increased, uh, demand on, on the area as far as a, a safety issue either.
Well, thank you for elaborating on that. That, that's kind of the point, um, I was trying to get at, is that, uh, all of these things are considered throughout the process. The safety, the fire department, the police department are looking at all of these things. Um, that, I mean, it's a huge concern for everyone who lives in Burnsville. I think we all think about safety as a, as a primary concern. Um, but it's refreshing to know that these are all things that are taken seriously as well by, uh, city staff. The other question, um, I have is, you know, maybe if you put the microbrewery in to the apartment complex, that might solve some of the concerns here as well.
We'll have a cellar room, and we have neighborhood parties, and we'd like to make friends, so we will reach out.
Uh, any additional questions for the applicant? Um, okay, thank you. I'm, I'm going to go back to Ms. Dean. Um, uh, question, so one of the commenters made a comment that some of the other developments there, not, not to, to beat this overnight parking exemption issue that is not part of this, uh, application, uh, um, not to beat that dead horse, but is there, somebody made a reference that there is that exemption for other properties in this area?
So, for Park Crest, um, on First Avenue, there is a specific license agreement, um, to allow overnight parking within, um, that area. And I think there are about eighteen parking spaces.
Interesting.
Um, through the, um, Chase development that was approved on the vacant site near Cub, um, I believe there was a request at one point to do a license agreement. I'm not sure if that was ever approved. Um, but there, there has been in the past specific request for overnight approval. Uh, it, it gets complicated, uh, for our, I think, our public safety personnel to determine, you know, what areas, um, overnight parking, what's not, also for our maintenance facility, if they're plowing, what, what's their responsibility to plow, what's the private, um, leaser of that space or license owner of that space, um, allowed to plow or not plow. Um, so having one consistent, no overnight parking, um, from two to six as a standard, um, that's the preferred route of our current, um, city staff.
And just to sum up the deviations question too, so, am I, am I reading this correctly that all of the proposed deviations, the parking, the density, that is all within the Heart of the City framework? I know it's not within ordinance, but that's the-
Yep. So, um, the, the top deviation requested in regards to density, that is in Heart of the City, uh, the specific requirement to fifty-six point nine-two units, and they're at sixty-one point two-four units per acre. The decrease in parking, um, so Heart of the City section of the code for residential refers to the general parking requirements in ten dash seven dash twenty-six. Um, there's also, um, the town center, I'm sorry, the Heart of the City design framework that mentions that one point five goal for apartment units. So, in code, codified is the two-hundred-and-thirty-nine parking spaces. That's based off of bedrooms, one bedroom and two bedrooms, and guest parking. So, because that Heart of the City, one point five parking spaces per unit is not codified, we can't reference that, um, technically when we're addressing deviations. So we have to go back to that general, um, requirement.
Okay.
And then, the setbacks are specific to Heart of the City, um, for parking and the building. And then, typically, monument signs are permitted within, um, other zoning districts, just not Heart of the City one. Uh, the idea is, this is an urban environment where, um, monument signs wouldn't be typical.
And is this, um, the map you showed about with transit service, um, I'm just trying to think, is there an area of Burnsville that has this much transit service? I, I mean, it seems very densely, lots of bus stops and such.
This area is, I would say, the most highly-served area in, in Burnsville with transit, um, not only with bus stops, but the existing MBTA Transit Service, as well as, um, the future Heart of the City Bus Rapid Transit stations. That was the intent of the Heart of the City Design Framework in nineteen ninety-five, and then even more so, um, with the Bus Rapid Transit, Orange Line stations.
Additional questions for Ms. Dean, or does anyone want to start on discussion? Debate?
No questions.
I'll start with kind of the comments. I, um, I, I appreciate everybody's coming out this evening, because it is, uh, um, uh, we don't often see a full room, so it's, it's, it's nice to have people, uh, interested in the work of the planning commission and interested in, in, in what's on our agenda. I completely understand, um, the concerns in the neighborhood about, um, about this project, and i- it, it is, after all, the last slice of, of Heart of the City. So it was easier to do these parking deviations for other projects, because there was always empty space. And with it being the last one, there's obviously going to be more, um, more concerns about it. But as Ms. Dean pointed out, um, this really fits the mold of transit-oriented development, which is what, which is a priority of the Metropolitan Council and, and the, the city as well, uh, in terms of having access to transit. Um, I do think, I do think there's some valuable points to, um, you know, not everybody's got three cars like some of us do, you know, in the, uh, in the, in the suburbs, so it's a, it's a different lifestyle, uh, and so forth. So I do think that needs to be approached from that regard. Um, so I, um, uh, the monument sign question is the one that, 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 uh, I don't think we, we dwelled, dwelt on much, but, um, and I'm kind of torn on that one, but I don't know.
Me as well.
Where, where the-
I think the applicant, if I may, um, interject, I think the applicant is okay if that's eliminated. It's not a deal breaker.
Okay. So, commissioners, there's two of you.
Yes.
Do we, uh, additional comment, or motions, or commissioner?
Comments.
Timmerman?
Um, so, thank you all for coming out. I, I agree, um, that it, it's great to have, um, our neighbors come out and, and share their input, unfortunately, um, it's not always positive feedback on particular projects. Um, I think this project looks nice. I think the building looks great. I think that, um, if it weren't for the fact that this neighborhood was so densely pop, um, populated, which is by design, um, then I don't think that this would necessarily be an issue. Um, but I don't think the landowner necess, necessarily should be, um, held to a higher standard than other projects have been in the past because of that. Um, I think this project perfectly meets the, um, the goals of Heart of the City. I think that, um, with the, the high usage of public transit in this area, we'll, we'll see that with people who live in this building as well. Um, my main concerns are safety, um, and, and I think that, um, with this project, that has been taken into consideration. And, and so I'm, I'm not concerned that there's going to be additional, um, safety issues if this project moves forward. The monument sign, I, I, I mean, it's not in line with Heart of, Heart of the City, so I, I wouldn't support a monument sign here.
Comments from Commissioner Henderson, or do we have a motion?
Both said it. Oh.
Who would like to go next?
I would like to make a motion.
Commissioner Henderson?
Yes. To recommend approval of the planned unit development amendment for the construction of a hundred and nine-unit apartment building located at the northwest corner of Burnsville Parkway and one Twenty-Fifth Street East with the following seven conditions listed in the staff report.
It's been moved as her second.
Second.
Moved in second, and further discussion. Seeing none, we'll go to a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, go for the city council on April second at five-thirty. Thank you very much. I think we're going to take a five-minute recess, uh, before the final item, so we'll be back at, in five minutes.
All right, welcome back. We are on our final item for the evening, which is a public hearing for Kramer Mining and Materials Incorporated for a concept stage planned unit development amendment for a reconfiguration of the mining boundary to include an additional approximately seventy-two acres on the easterly and south-westerly areas of the site located at ten-twenty Cliff Road West. Ms. Garros?
Thank you. The, uh, application is, um, this is very similar to the, uh, Burnsville Sanitary Landfill application in that, um, we have in the background information, quite a bit of information related to the freeway landfill, uh, site, and kind of, uh, what's going to be happening with that and the applicant. Uh, also, they abut that site and have concerns over, you know, potential, uh, pollution and groundwater, and some of the operations that currently take place, uh, at, uh, the applicant's property actually are helping the situation, because they're, um, pumping and, uh, moving water out of there. So with that, there's a lot of information that, um, I will go over in great detail, because Planning Commission, uh, has viewed that. But if you have any particular questions, uh, please let me know, and, and I can go through that with you. The subject site, uh, for Kramer Mining and Materials, that's KMM Inc., uh, they own about five hundred acres, plus or minus, in the Minnesota River Quadrant, and the site is identified here in, uh, in purple. Uh, this is not all of their land holdings. Uh, they do own some land, uh, to the south of the highway, or, excuse me, of the railroad tracks as well. And just for, um, purposes of some of the information that's in the background report, their office is, there you go, is located, um, right here in this area. This would be Cliff Road, uh, and the I-35 interchange. And then we talked about the area for storage that they have approval for, for previous planned unit developments. That's in this area. Of course, you've got the area of, uh, where they're doing active, uh, mining, uh, and then the property is to the north up here. Um, they own as well, they, uh, front on the Minnesota River and are primarily intended to remain in their, uh, natural state, if you will. Um, some of the areas have been used for, um, wetland banking and are, are intended to be that way. So what we're talking about today primarily is expanding the mine. They're looking at an area here in the southwest- So what we're talking about today primarily is expanding the mine. They're looking at an area here in the southwest. This would be the Burnsville Sanitary Landfill, and then on the site, um, this is the main entrance to the landfill. There is the, um, gas to electric, the methane gas to electric facility right on the corner, which is actually on the KMM property. Um, but they take the, uh, methane gas from the landfill site. Uh, then there's also the compost facility that's back here. And, uh, they have also, uh, leased properties to Semstone, and they are located at this location here. They, um, KMM is the largest probably property owner in the entire Minnesota River Quadrant. Um, you've seen this before with the waste management landfill, Burnsville Sanitary Landfill here, the entire quarry property. The freeway landfill, which is a superfund site, is just to the north. And then this is the freeway dump site, which is on the other side of the highway, and this is where that, uh, Gulf driving range is. The PUD dates back, um, many years. This is, uh, actually something from, I believe, nineteen ninety-four, um, when they established, you know, the, the mine had been in operation before that, uh, and then also the landfill. But, um, in nineteen ninety-four, that was probably the first real substantive, um, time the city was involved with the project. And over the years, uh, there have been a series of different amendments and changes, um, usually related to getting to another phase of development of the, the property. And this just shows what their long-term end-use plan was based from nineteen ninety-four. What we're looking at tonight is a concept stage planned unit development amendment, and that is looking at changing the mining boundaries to expand them, uh, from what's been approved in the past. The most recent PUD amendment, uh, that was approved was back in twenty sixteen. And this is, uh, this shows basically what that, uh, approval was, and I just want to call your attention again to the southwest area. In twenty nineteen, uh, there was a little bit further expansion, um, including, uh, to the west, and they also established, um, uh, these, um, areas where there are edge treatments. And when we talk about edge treatments with the quarry, generally you just have this, um, straight line down to, you know, the, the base of the quarry. Because part of this is going to be redeveloped in the future, the city has, uh, an interest and the applicant, uh, has always worked with the city to look at recreational, um, development ultimately. When the quarry closes, uh, this will fill with water and will have, uh, this large lake area. But instead of having it just these, um, huge cliffs, if you will, there were a number of edge treatments that have been approved over the years. So I just am including this, um, not because they're talking about specific edge treatments tonight, but just so you know, in the recommendations, we anticipate over, you know, the next, um, year, couple of years, as the applicant works towards the, uh, ultimate development of the property, we'll be looking at most likely establishing and talking about edge treatments in various locations. And this is just a different one for a different, uh, part of the lake, but basically showing, you know, instead of having that steep drop-off right here, you know, they'll provide an area where, um, you know, people can go in swimming in the areas that will be public and, and those types of things. So this is actually the proposed, uh, plan, and what the applicant would like to do is expand, uh, and do mining in the southwest area in, through this area here, which is about twenty-six acres. This was in the past, uh, going to be, uh, industrial land and, uh, no mining was previously, um, going to take place in that area. But the applicant would like to be able to do that. And then they're also looking at the east area expansion, and this is not, um, the entire east part of the property, but, um, they've got an area of about forty-six acres that they would like to expand. And the distance between approximately where this boundary would be to the, um, east property line is about four hundred feet in that location. So that's really what we're talking about, and then they've identified on the plan, um, you know, where some of these, um, different boundaries are that are shown. And also, um, another element of this that the Planning Commission, I believe, is aware of is that the city of Burnsville, City of Savage, and then the applicant have worked together, um, for, uh, joint, um, joint partnership in their drinking water supply. So all of these things, uh, the city has a long relationship with, uh, with KMM. One of the things that they will need to address for any future development stage application is that when the, um, FEMA maps were redone back in two thousand and eleven, um, it does show that the majority of the site, except, you know, a small portion of the storage area and through here, um, is within the floodplain. So they will need to be working, um, at the time of development stage to work with FEMA, the city, through conditional use permits or whatever mechanism is needed to remove the areas that will be used for future development from the floodplain. The floodway is to the north, and this would apply. Um, the floodway is the area generally thought of to be associated with the actual river channel itself and, and where you have, um, where you have flooding, uh, that can occur from that area. In terms of the freeway landfill and freeway dump, um, some of the issues that are at play and, uh, what is kind of prompting or helping this application, um, along is we have the freeway landfill and the freeway dump. They are both online. Um, this is a superfund site, and the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency has been working with, um, Environmental Protection Agency, Dakota County, any number of, um, agencies, including City of Burnsville, um, to try to find a way to, uh, close this landfill and basically, um, make it so that we don't have a situation with a lot of waste in an unlined area so close to our aquifers, uh, in the shoreline and in the floodplain, et cetera. So in terms of freeway landfill, um, we know primarily the background there is we've had, it's closed, it's no longer accepting waste. Um, it was never lined. It's a fairly large piece of property. And with the MPCA, what they are looking at are options to basically take the waste and dig it out and then replace it on-site. And the issues that we've discussed are that when pumping ceases, uh, when the applicant, uh, is done with their mining and, and that pumping operation ceases, there's a potential then for the, um, uh, pollutants in the area to get into the waters and drinking supply area. What the applicant, uh, is talking about doing is part of their operation. Not only would they be able to work with, um, Burnsville Sanitary Landfill and, and other property owners to, uh, look at moving the waste, but they also have the ability to work with the underlying rock, which may also have, uh, contamination with it as well. So they have the ability to actually then go in if there is contamination in that, uh, in that rock, they would be able to mine that and clean that up as well. That's something I don't believe that is currently considered or included in the MPCA's plans. So that, that is a real opportunity, uh, a real plus for, um, for the applicant in their plan. This just shows the large area of the, um, existing freeway landfill. And basically, the MPCA is looking at several options. Um, the three options are, I, are shown here. They, um, they range in terms of size of the overall footprint and also the height, depending on which one you look at. The tallest one would be about a hundred and forty feet tall, and this would be basically from, you know, you see this from ground level, so it's a hundred and forty-two feet, you know, right up pretty much close to the thirty-five corridor. The shortest one would be sixty-six feet tall, and then they have a mid-range option, which would be about seventy-five feet tall. But all of these would be very close to the, um, uh, to the interchange, or excuse me, the highway. The other issue with the MPCA alternatives are that, um, they would be looking to enroll the site into the closed landfill program. And along with that, there are restrictions on how adjacent properties can be used and timeframes in which, um, they can or cannot be used. This shows an overview of kind of the MPCAs. Um, if they were to fill in place as they're, uh, proposing, you would have, again, fairly close to the interstate, you know, this, um, hundred-foot, seventy-five to a hundred-foot, um, landfill. And then on the other side, basically, you would still be restricted even when the garbage is removed from this area because of this closed landfill program. And that really, the point is, there really is not, uh, much, if anything, for a development option for the other adjacent property. This is just an overview. We talked a little bit, um, in the last application about the, uh, city's comprehensive plan, our twenty forty comprehensive plan. And in terms of the, um, digging and lining and filling on-site for the freeway landfill, uh, it really is not something that is in the best interest of the city. And the city council had a work session back in October of last year, and they were excited to have the opportunity to work with the applicant and other property owners, uh, to see if there's another way to get closure of this, uh, freeway landfill and, um, also allow for some development opportunity as well. So what the option is, excuse me for a second. Sorry. What the option is, uh, that we've discussed is basically taking the fill from both freeway dump and landfill and moving it over hopefully to the lined areas, uh, or new areas of the, um, landfill. And the applicant, something that's positive about this is they would be able to haul through the private, you know, their private property to get it from point A to point B, so not including, um, traffic on freeways and, and other, um, highly traveled roads. And they have the opportunity, as I said, to work with the rock underneath as well. And in terms of the city's twenty forty vision, what they're indicating and what we've seen before is this is basically kind of a combination of what, uh, the applicant would like to see, the landfill, the other property owners, and the city's comprehensive plan. And primarily ending up with new development property along the east, the lake and recreational area, uh, for the public through here and trails. This, we have two options, and the applicant is willing to work with the city on both of these options. They feel that, um, that there is an opportunity to work. We've got a possibility of, um, just the current interchange that's there now along Cliff Road. They will be doing some upgrade to that. And then, uh, this would be an interchange at Black Dog, which primarily exists there. But again, a commercial area, potentially some residential, and, um, looking at reclaiming the riverfront. In this case, there is an option also for another interchange possibly, and the applicant, uh, is able to work with both scenarios. So we just, uh, included that, uh, just because there are two options and we don't know, uh, if this second interchange will happen or not. And this would be the preferred plan, so when we're looking at the end-use plan, if you will, kind of as a concept, um, this is what things would change to, where you're basically here looking kind of from northeast to southwest, but looking at the, um, quarry once it fills to the new lake, and then the applicant, um, would own the majority of the property for redevelopment, uh, into this area, and then again showing the riverfront and the other landfill would be back in this location. With that, staff is recommending approval of the concept PUD. We think that this is a great opportunity, um, for the applicant. Um, they are willing to take on some responsibility that they wouldn't normally have to. Um, and it's an opportunity to get that superfund site closed and dealt with once and for all. We don't know for sure when the MPCA is going to be, uh, making its decision. They are working with, um, with the city and, and the property owners to take a look at this option as well. Um, there's additional testing that still needs to be done out at the freeway landfill site. Um, they think they have an idea of what, uh, is out there, but they don't know for sure. So, um, more testing, hopefully this summer, uh, to be able to move on. So with that, um, staff is recommending approval, again, similar to the landfill application. What we're looking at here is identifying types of things, the things that we think, um, will be needed for the applicant to provide or work with the city as they get to the next phase, that development stage phase. With the concept stage PUD, there are no permits that are granted, um, there's no work that they can do out at the site. It's kind of an opportunity to take a look at the concept overall and identify what we think is needed or will need to be worked through in order to get to that future phase. And with that, if the applicant is here, if you'd like to ask questions or if they would like to, uh...
Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Chairman and members of the Planning Commission. My name is Kirsten Polly. I'm a geologist and civil engineer with Sunday Engineering. Um, I'm here tonight on behalf of Kramer Mining and Materials. Also, John Rovisto and Chris Anderson are here. Deb gave a great presentation and overview of the big picture, and we are certainly here and available to answer any questions you may have. Um, I'll give you a, a very brief, um, overview of some aspects of it that I think are worth, um, mentioning. One is the, the project is an expansion in excess of forty acres, and so therefore it meets requirements for mandatory environmental review. So there will be, as part of this process, an environmental assessment worksheet that's prepared and an environmental review process. And that area looks at all kinds of broad categories of environmental concern or potential concern, and so that will be part of this process as well. The, um, the fact that these two expansion areas are located in, in areas that are immediately adjacent to the approved mine limits, where there's been past land uses that are auxiliary to the, um, mine, means that there's likely to be very few, um, impacts associated with this. All of the same processing equipment, all of the same transportation routes, all of the same production levels will be maintained. There's not an additional, um, changes to air permits or water permits. So all of those things are status quo. The, um, one issue that will be reviewed in detail in a groundwater model setup is that of groundwater, which is a theme that you've heard about just with the freeway landfill, protection of the city's water resources, and what happens when the, um, mining is done and the water level control, um, is no longer needed and, and the, the lake is created. Um, so that is one element that will be, um, studied further in the EAW and, um, working with the city to address their concerns over, um, water supply and the sump and sump improvements as well. Um, and the other aspect, um, is on the, um, eastern side of the expansion area, we're working with, um, Bar Engineering in developing a, um, plan for the mining and backfill and reclamation of that mining area so that the end-use of that will be additional lake with added shoreline interest, but there will also be backfilling with structural fill that will allow then, um, end-use development and reclamation that would be consistent with the, um, end-use plans. And I know it's kind of been a long night, and I don't want to take up your time, but we are certainly here to answer any questions you have. And we have, as Deb said, been in front of the, um, council at the workshop session, working with other landowners in the area and are really excited about moving this project forward.
Thank you. Uh, I've, I've got a question, and let me preface it by saying that my college science requirements were all done in geology, so I-
Yes.
I feel like I'm virtually an expert in the topic, so these may be above the rest of you. A lot of, a lot of what you're talk- uh, uh, what we have here is, is, um, discussion of acres, acres to be mined. What does that mean for the depth of the mine? Is that all set forth by PCA or some such thing, or how does that work?
The PCA doesn't regulate depth, and actually the PUD agreement does not regulate depth either. However, there is a, um, a protective level of depth because of the, the situation of the, the different sequestrator levels. And so if you go too deep, you have the chance to get too much, um, uh, transmission of water from under, from underlying aquifers. And so there has been, um, a significant study and modeling to make sure that the, um, mine and, and the, the, um, the, if that were to happen, more water would come into the quarry and you would have to de-water higher levels. And there's, the DNR, um, has a specific limit as to how much de-watering can occur here. So it is in the best interest of the mine operator to understand exactly how, um, how deep they can- can mine without making that happen. And that's been done. And then that is also as, as new, as these new mining areas are being analyzed, that is being revisited to make sure that that mine depth in those areas is sufficient to maintain the existing water appropriations that are allowed.
Great, thank you. Additional questions?
Sure.
Commissioner Henderson.
The southwest quadrant, would that have an effect on the methane-to-energy station?
The, that station is actually outside of the proposed limits, and I, I don't know is that, is that got a time, certain date, or... And so my understanding is that is going to remain, but the composting would be relocated or removed, and then the potential lease of the Semstone at that, when that is up, could be mined as well, a portion of that.
Okay, thank you.
Additional questions? All right, we will open the public hearing then at nine sixteen PM. If anybody would like to comment, come forward, identify yourself for the record, welcome.
Good evening. My name is Linda McGinty. I'm with the Luther Companies, and we are a little landowner right next to...
Oh, I was gonna ask about that, the old Volkswagen dealership, right?
Correct, that one.
I bought a car there once.
Thank you.
Sorry, dinner.
It was much nicer.
That's for sure.
We also own the Knox, the former Knox property that's to the south of the site. We obviously haven't had any activity on these parcels for pretty obvious reasons. However, we have had considerable interest in our property. And in good faith, I find it difficult to tell any potential buyer that, hey, yeah, this would be a great site for your activity center. One of, that's what one of the inquiries was. The concern I have right now is relative to the forty acres being, I think it was mentioned as four hundred feet from the thirty-five W right-of-way, which would put it, I think, within a hundred feet from our property line. And if there's blasting in the area, I think that that would render that site pretty useless to any user. We have not had any conversations. Nobody has approached our company that I'm aware of. I'm vice president of real estate, and I became aware of this through the public notice that was sent by the city. Same for the Knox property just to the south. You know, my tenure doesn't go back to the late nineties when we were told that this would be developed by now. We were told at that time that if we wanted to put a building on the Knox property site, that we should be prepared to tear it down, like in fifteen to twenty years. You know, not, not a very good investment. There's also the potential of the road going through if that cliff interchange is still in the works. So we're kind of at a arms up in the air, oh my gosh, what, you know, what, what can we do here? You know, we absolutely do not want to downplay at all the potential that, you know, is appearing before you. It's, you know, it's a great plan. The, the big question mark is that timeline. You know, twenty forty, you know, I probably won't be here now, standing in front of you, talking, I hope to be here, but, you know, maybe not right here. Although I told our owner, don't plan on me retiring at all, but that day will come. So it seems like on and on and on and on and on, and yet we're very limited as to what we can do with what we have in that area. And so I don't have a solution. I don't. I just would like it to be noted that, you know, there are some adjacent parcels and there are some concerns. That's all. And if you guys would like my card, I'd be happy to.
Thank you very much. Additional comments? All right, closing the public hearing then at nine twenty PM. Commissioners, additional questions or comments? I just want to follow on the last commenter's comments. I mean, this is a concept PUD, so there's a lot of, lot of steps that need to happen here, obviously, for, for this, this whole grand, grand project. So I wish we had more, more ideas of certainty. This is really the, the beginning of the next step process, so... But I appreciate your coming out here and discussing that with us. Additional comments, or do we have a motion to be made?
I just want to agree with that. Thank you for coming out, because this is the, you know, the first time I've heard from neighboring properties that I recall. And it's good to at least have that knowledge and understand, you know, kind of where you are, too. So thank you for sharing tonight.
Okay, I would entertain any kind of motion.
Did you want to?
I gotta make sure I'm on the right page. I see you're on it.
Oh, yeah, I can do it.
Commissioner Henderson.
Okay, I recommend to the city council approve, approval of the concept stage PUD amendment with the following items to be considered and addressed as part of the development stage PUD. Items one through twenty as listed in the staff report.
Do you have a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. I will just, before we go to a vote, I just want to thank the folks at Kramer. I know in a past life, when I was on the Met Council for a brief period of time, we did a lot of work on the issues of aggregate, and I understand how important it is to have a mine like this so close to the metropolitan area in terms of the cost that it, the cost benefits that it has for the entire region. So I appreciate the work that, that you do there and, and that you're willing to be, help be part of the solution for this, the issues in the entire quadrant. So with that, any other comments, or we'll move to a vote? All right, all those in favor say aye. Aye opposed? Motion carries. That will be on the city council agenda on April second. Thank you. All right, that concludes our active agenda for this afternoon, for this evening. The last item is updates.
Yes, so the two projects that you heard at last Planning Commission, the Healy-Rammy-Lessessi development that went to city council and was approved, and the Todd Kristofferson-Plattin variances that were before you, that was also approved. And then I have the draft agenda for Monday, April eighth, for you, if you can pass those down.
All right, thank you very much. Commissioners, any updates?
Chair, I just have a question on legislation. Do we have some movement on the Tiff district in the Burnsville Center area?
Yes, if I can answer that.
That's a good question.
So it is still active. It's my understanding that it needs to go to the taxation division or department. And, and there's no decision at this point, but from what I hear, there's some pretty good momentum. Just kind of wait and see at this point unless we're asked of. That's what I know.
Thank you.
Anything else, or?
I have one.
Ms. Garros?
Yes, just one, one point. We're getting to the time of year for Planning Commission appointments. The city council does that every year. And I did find out, Mr. Timmerman, if you don't automatically get to be a full member, apparently.
Oh, you're still an alternate, huh?
I mean, we still think, we still think you are. But, so you probably want to just contact the city clerk, Michelle, and I'll send you, I'll send you her contact information, but just to let the council know that you'd be interested, as I thought you would. But apparently, that's how that's taken care of.
On record, I am interested.
I live and learn. Okay. And I think, I think that's it.
All right, is there a motion to adjourn?
It's all moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, all those in favor say aye. Aye opposed? Motion carries, we are adjourned. Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
You, too.